You already have my emails.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. January 24, 2023, 1:00 p.m. meeting for the Board of County Commissioners, Citrus County, Florida. At this time, I am going to ask Chief Stevens if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will give the invocation. If you would like to stand or are able to stand, please stand with us.
Dear Lord, thank you for today, and thank you for the citizens and the commissioners that are here to serve our county. Pray that we show grace in our decisions and wisdom, and that the citizens have a quality of life that they all deserve. Thank you for your blessings, and pray that you forgive us our sins as we forgive others that have sinned against us. In your name, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could we do roll call, please?
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is 24th day of January 2023. In attendance, Commission Chair Ruthie Schleba, First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bayes, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Lynn.
Thank you. It's nice having you here today. Okay, item A for approval of the agenda. Board, what is your pleasure?
Chair, may I approve the agenda?
Thank you. I have a motion. I need to... Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Consent. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I approve the consent?
Commissioner Kennard, I need a second.
Second.
I heard Davis first. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Board, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Proclamations. See, I'm looking for a motion to accept the proclamation for today.
Motion. Second.
Kennard and Commissioner Davis. Board, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. And if we could go down front for this, please.
While the Commissioners are coming down, folks who are here for certified registered nurse anesthetists... Anasthetists. Why am I saying anesthetists? Anesthetists. Week, come forward, please. Hey, whoa. I'm having a thing about anesthesia. Here we go. Good? Okay. The Board of County Commissioners, Citrus County, Florida, where a certified registered nurse has anasthesis. That's gonna kill me. Anasthetist is gonna hurt me today. Our advanced-practice registered nurse provided anesthesia... I got that one. ...cared to patients at the United States for more than 150 years. CRNAs are among the nation's most trusted professionals. Legislation passed by Congress in 1986 made nurses the first nursing specialist to accorded direct reimbursement rights by Medicare. And CRNAs are primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to U.S. military personnel. And where CRNAs practice in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered from traditional hospital surgical suites obstetrically... Something is killing me today. The Labor Room is a critical access hospital for ambulatory surgery centers to those... to the office of dentists, podiatrists... Oh, my God. Amnologists, pain management specialists, and more. And CRNAs are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and literature. And where CRNAs are trusted anesthesia experts on the front lines caring for patient safety and compassionately delivering specialized cost-effective care to all patients from newborns to seniors for every type of procedure in all types of facilities. And where CRNAs are encouraged serving the front lines on the ongoing coronavirus pandemic using their advanced skills in airway management, intubation, and ventilator management to care for sickest patients. Now therefore, Board of County Commissioners are hereby proclaim the period of January 1st, 28 to 28/23, as CRNAs week in Citrus County, Florida, signed by all five County Commissioners.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Florida Association of Nurse Anesthesiology and all certified registered nurse anesthetists across the country, I would like to graciously thank the Citrus County for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it to the public, but before I do, we have a 1:30 time certain. So if you see it's getting around that time, we're going to stop, go to the time certain, and then we will come right back to the open to the public. So if you would like to speak at this time, please fill out a green card. You have three minutes to speak unless you have a letter on file, and then you will get five minutes. So anyone that would like to speak at this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Schwartz. I live in Beverly Hills, and I'm here because I'm very concerned about the issue pertaining to what we... what this county is going to become if we do not balance our lovely county with nature and the existence of homes that are being built. If we do continue on the route that we are going, what will happen is we will overpopulate our land with people. There will be no room for the animals. There will be no room for peace and quiet, which is what Deltona had in 1972. What they stated was if you are in search of a secluded utopia that fills your dreams of room to roam with wooded rolling areas, then Pine Ridge is your place to be. Mr. Olson said, before he passed away, and it's on the record, that his vision for this county was to have an infrastructure prior to growth taking place. Because if we grow too quickly and our animals keep being pushed around from place to place, they're eventually either going to be killed off or they're going to go elsewhere, and the ecosystem will be unbalanced. If we unbalance our ecosystem, the manatees will no longer be here. May take 20 years. We need to balance nature and growth in the Nature Coast. In particular, the project that's going on... I know you'll be speaking about it later on in the meeting, but the project that's going on there, what I would like to see is the equal buffer zone all the way around of a minute of 100 feet. The vinyl fence be made out of cement. Reason for that is is because vinyl will be broken down, animals, whether it be by animals or people. And in that case, if you do not have a cement barrier, which is high enough, which should be about 10 feet, you will not have a sound barrier for those that live there. Think of yourself, and I ask you to be kind and compassionate to those people that are living there as if you were living there, and it was your land that was being impeded upon. So I would hope that when you do approve that, and I have put a letter in for all of you to read, which I will not address now or even at the 5:00, because it is a major issue pertaining to the county. But pertaining to what's going on there, I would look, before you finalize, that you look at all aspects of it, including any future building, and not turning... rezoning any area, which is a possibility that's going to take place in Pine Ridge with that golf course, because Mr. Dix now owns that. And again, it impedes on people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. I moved here physically in 2006, but my relatives, my in-laws and stuff, were here since 1968 when Jack Kellner started Beverly Hills. They were friends with him. They helped him with construction and stuff. My in-laws helped pay for the Beverly Hills pool because it was through the recreation, and they belonged to the recreation. That pool is for the people of Beverly Hills. I know Mr. Kitchen, who used to be a Commissioner, wanted it filled in with cement. That's not what it's for. The people of Beverly Hills and in our area, Citrus Springs and Hernando, not everyone has a pool, not even everyone can afford a pool. That pool was made so that older people could get out and exercise in the sun, get their vitamin D, get their socialization, do things. Kids could get out there with their moms and dads and enjoy water, enjoy what we have to offer in Florida, in Citrus County, not to be filled in with cement. The idea is we have been working diligently as an organization to try to get funding and get something that is feasible. There is a feasible plan coming to you. So we are... I am asking you to, before you vote, to put cement into a pool, to please think about what you're doing. Ron's not here anymore. Please don't follow his idea, because from day one, he didn't want a pool. I know Rebecca was here when the other Commissioners were here, and the pool was given to the county. And that was because the Civic Association could no longer meet the insurance needs. And they promised... Joe Meek and everybody else, along with Rebecca, promised to keep it as a pool for the community. Okay? When you drive from Beverly Hills to Crystal River to go to a pool, sometimes, by the time you get there, it's raining in Crystal River, and the pool's closed. When you drive from Beverly Hills to Inverness, the same thing. If you're in Beverly Hills and it's sunny, you should be able to use the pool that's there. Granted, it says 48 people. That's still 48 people. And if it goes the way it should, it'll be open at convenient hours for families, with a price for families, that the county won't have to bother with anything. It'll be taken away from the county completely. All you have to do is say, here, we signed a bill of sale to you, and it's your headache from now on. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Leacy. I have lived in Citrus County since 1985. I'm a retired structural engineer with Duke Energy and Florida Power. The subject I have been researching is Citrus County's quest for a desperately needed new animal shelter. Originally budgeted at $9 million, we recently learned in December that $22 million was the price tag being floated. My question is why Citrus County is not investigating renovating or converting any of the existing properties in the county in lieu of building a new facility? My interest in this began over a year ago when I sent Duke Energy President Melissa Sages a letter asking what, if anything, was Duke Energy doing with the abandoned training center on Venable Street. Within days, she had Community Relations Director Dorothy Pernue reach out to me, and Ms. Pernue said at the time, no plans were being made. We'll revisit that in a second. It appears to me the $22 million estimate for this facility represents nothing short of a Taj Mahal of a facility that the current architects are attempting to convince the county into purchasing. I have printed out and read the American Humane Society's Operational Guide to Planning and Building an Animal Shelter. While there are several key considerations that need to be addressed, these do not fall into the category of elaborate obstacles that cannot be overcome. Furthermore, I have researched Marion County's animal shelter website. In it, they published the strategic five-year plan, and that plan described the need for a new facility, given their spatial limitations. They received a quote of $7.5 million. Most importantly in that plan, they mentioned the Bacon Group in Clearwater, Florida. I researched the Bacon Group's website. They are an industry leader in animal shelter design, have designed over 40% of the animal shelters in the United States. Their website lists no less than 54 shelters in which they have been involved. My question then is why is Citrus County dealing solely with the Tokoi Engineering Group and MLM and not the Bacon Group in Clearwater, Florida? I would think at a minimum, this process should be competitively bid rather than relying on a sole source entity. Now regarding the abandoned Duke Energy Training Facility on Venable Street, I have since learned from Ms. Pernue that back in April of 2022, the facility was put up for sale. The 50,000-square-foot facility is being handled by JLL Properties. I called John Dunphy, the Executive Managing Director of JLL, to inquire about specifics. He informed me the current asking price would be roughly $60 per square foot, which translates into approximately $3 million. Bear in mind, that's an asking price. Given that this facility has sat vacant for so long, I have to believe a far less negotiable price could be agreed upon. Now, whether the training facility conversion is practical or not remains to be seen. At a minimum, I would ask we reach out to the Bacon Group and get their opinion. I thank you for your time and have copies of everything for further discussion.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, my name is Harvey Gerber. I'm president of Beverly Hills Civic Association and president of Nature Coast Global Housing Corp., both of which are nonprofit organizations located here in Citrus County. I didn't file in advance, so I'm going to speak quickly and try to cover the territory. I'm going to ask for a motion to table because Commissioner Kennard, for example, said he didn't have time to read all those materials that I had submitted. Motion Kennard would address that problem. We need that addressed because, I'm going to talk quickly, we are trying to establish the viability, long-term viability of that, as well as we have the proof submitted to you just now that we have the money. A month from now, we'll have $150,000. Our budget is $100,000 for the pool and $30,000 for a playground about 200 yards away. So we have all the money and then some. Now viability, we have a young builder called New Roots Construction. That's Andrew Chagnon. He has a letter that's been submitted to you. You need to review it, please. He is the future of the organization. That will be the builder. Scott Lundey of Southern Fried Construction has been our builder all these years. He stood up at the Boys and Girls Club Dinner and said, I've been doing this for 10 years. He has. And I have been the developer. Scott does the hard work, and I help him as much as I can. I'll be doing the same thing with Andrew because he came to me a year and a half ago and said, I want to do what you've done. I started in 2003, forming Nature Coast Global Housing Corp. In 2004, we started building houses. I've built about 28 houses. All of the money goes to the Boys and Girls Club. Going down the line, back in 2008, I was on the job every day at the Boys and Girls Club in Beverly Hills as the construction manager. We had a different contractor volunteering to be the license because he needed a commercial license. We had J&amp;J Remodeling and Renovation, Inc. They believed in what we wanted to do, so for nothing. I was there. I did. I supervised all the subs, and I raised all the money, $530,000 to build the building that's there now. Now we move on to 2009, where... or actually, 2008, I wanted to talk to you about. I became Citrus County's nonprofit, all-volunteer program manager for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which Michelle Alfred will testify to, has gotten positive audits every time. She can show you the audits. We supply a wonderful documented book that shows that we're using those funds properly once a year, and that was a HUD. So we, Nature Coast, are a HUD builder since that time. We could do more if we wanted to. I don't know that we're going to need to. I guess that's it.
There is another open to the public later, and you can also talk on the agenda item.
Very good. I will be back later then.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bonnie Larson Schafer. I live in Beverly Hills. I firmly believe that this should be left to be used... utilized by the residents and the surrounding area, the pool. When this property was given to the Beverly Hills Recreation Association, this property, along with everything else, was to be used strictly for recreational activities. We've let it sit for a couple of years without any activities going on down there. If we put a slab over it, what do we have? Nothing. We have a slab. We are... I get everyone at my office coming up there in their bathing suits saying, what happened to the pool? Oh, they closed today. Oh, they didn't show up today. Or there's a cloud in the sky. What am I saying? That is not good for the people of Beverly Hills. We have children coming to visit, grandchildren, children, whatever. They'd like to use it. We were promised this when we moved here. That was one of the things that, when they started building out Beverly Hills, was the pool and all the activity going on. I think that we need it, as well as Inverness, Crystal River has stuff. We need it too, and we're your largest tax base in the county and voting base. I think that it should mean a little bit to each and every one of you. I think Ms. Bayes was on the commission before when we brought it up to vote one of the times, and I appreciate all that each and every one of you do. But please consider doing this. I've worked beside Harvey for several years now. I know he follows through on what he says he's going to do. I can say that. Whether we agree or disagree, he follows through. He gets a job done. So when their people can build the pool, please consider letting them have the pool. Last few years, we've been offered the pool for zero. We've been offered the pool for $1. We've been offered the pool for $5 from the BOCC. Let's follow through and get some people back in there and bring it us alive again. I think Francine's done a wonderful job getting rid of the alligators, so we don't have people walking down around the lake and getting bit by an alligator. So please consider it, each and every one of you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next speaker.
Greetings, Commissioners. I'm Ms. Rhonda Rhonda Santos. Yes, thank you. I would like to bring to your attention the fact that I'm hearing a lot of this donating. The county should donate the property for the Beverly Hills pool, the property for the Finnegans. And I'm like, since when did property become so arbitrary, we can just donate it, and it's worthless? Basically, that's what they're asking like. I believe that the county should restore the pool. It should be very... it should be treated no different than the Crystal River one and the Whispering Pines pool. It should be open to the public. People could pay, and it should be fine. But it does need to be a community base, and it is owned by the BOCC, and therefore it should remain in the BOCC. We should not be donating it or selling it for $5 for anyone, because who's to say that they won't change their agenda down the road and then it becomes something else? Gets torn down, pick a ball court, or whatever it becomes? I don't agree with that. Then I brought you some maps. I was reading the other day on the Just Right Citrus website about what Diane Finnegan and her husband are planning to do, and this is a map of the little peninsula that they live in, in Homosassa. You'll notice there's a little cul-de-sac right before the two houses that they own. They want to take that property. I'm like, okay. So imagine, hmm, maybe you're a UPS driver, and you went down the wrong street. Well, where are you going to turn around if they take up the cul-de-sac? There's no place for them to turn around, then there's no place else to build a cul-de-sac. Okay? So that doesn't make any sense. This was... this is county property. We don't give county property to citizens for free. Everything costs money around here, and if so, you know, they should have to pay for it. That's what I had to say today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sabrina Watson. I'll be speaking for the Exceptional Life Project today, so if I could have five minutes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, my goal is education, so I want to start with Article 1, Section 24 of the Constitution that reads, "Every person has the right to inspect or copy any public record made or received in connection with the official business of any public body, officer, or employee of the state, or persons acting on their behalf, except with respect to records exempted pursuant to this section or specifically made confidential by this Constitution." I myself, as well as dozens of other people, have signed a notice of maladministration that has been served on Mo Baird. I'd like to read it to you. I, one of the people, is seeing the Florida Constitution Declaration of Rights, Article 1, Section 1, "Sue juris in this quarter of record come to you, being trustees of the peoples, stating that you must provide due care, and you remember your oaths which bind you." The Florida State Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, "Political power. All political power is inherent in the people. The annunciation herein of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or impair others retained by the people." Please take notice that I, one of the people, make the following statements and claims, "That Maureen Baird, in her official capacity of supervisor of elections and office and/or staff, is attempting to conceal public records and/or deny them to the public through the use of required payment. Said payments are exorbitant or excessive. Time needed to prepare documents for inspection is also inflated. The previous listed actions are an attempt to detour the rights of I, one of the people, through financial intimidation and means." Maureen Baird made statements to the Citrus County Chronicle on or about February 17, 2022, titled "Baired: Fear Level Is Up at Election Offices Nationwide." This article made statements regarding hostile, intimidating, or threatening emails received by Maureen Baird and office and/or staff. Affiant requested copies of said emails. Maureen Baird, supervisor of elections and office and/or staff, demanded payment of $95 for the emails. Emails used for claims in the newspaper editorial should have been readily available as the article had just been published, and Maureen Baird, in her official capacity of supervisor of elections, had just been interviewed. In December 2022, I, one of the people, made a public records request for copies of oaths signed by the members of the Citrus County Republican Executive Committee for the calendar year 2022. These oaths are filed at the Secretary of Elections' office, thereby becoming a public record. Maureen Baird, in her official capacity of Secretary of Elections and office and/or staff, sent affiant an invoice demanding payment in the amount of $236, claiming three hours of staff time needed to copy approximately 110 oaths. Said invoice also included seven hours of staff time to research voters and redact or scan oaths. Maxims of law 11W reads, "In the presence of the superior power, the inferior power ceases. The less authority is merged into the greater." For those people that don't understand law, what that means is that the Constitution takes precedent over statutes. Maximum of law 11S, "One lawfully commanded must be obeyed." Maxims of law 11G, "When anything is commanded, everything by which it can be accomplished is also commanded." Her staff is paid to provide public records. Please take notice that all state, county, local city, all boards, including those representing school districts, are elected or employed agents within the state and are to fulfill the requirements of the office for which you were elected or employed. Please take notice that with the full knowledge of the oath you were taking in your elected office, took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the Florida Constitution. The requirements of the office for which you were elected or hired are indicated in the Florida Constitution and are detailed in the appropriate state statutes which apply to your position. In addition, you, as well as all other agents, were elected with full knowledge that you are now trust-endentured servants of those who elected you. We, the people, all elected and hired agents, are subject to an oath of office to which you are elected or employed." I'm not going to read it all. There's more to it than that. But I would also like to point out to the people that are watching, listening, or in the room, that the attempt... that there seems to be also an attempt going on within the Board of County Commissioners to hide other things that the public should know about, such as item F, outstanding commission item. to hide other things that the public should know about, such as Item F, outstanding commission items, to which I have been unable to get a response to my email regarding. And I wonder if that would fall within the same category of violating the Constitution. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Beryl Scott from Beverly Hills, and I'd like to see the pool reopen. We've got more people coming into the county all the time, all this growth that we keep hearing about. And for $22 million, we can get the animal shelter, the pool, and the Baker Act building. So let's get the money. Let's get these things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Deborah Spence, Crystal River. Just as a follow-up to this morning's meeting, I have to say that I'm very, very disappointed that the county went through this whole mess yet again. When we're there at a public meeting to talk about a board, very few people mentioned the board, less than 10% of the people that were here talked about that. And I hold this county board responsible for the tenor of what's going on in this community at this point and to stop some of the harassment of the LGBT community.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Afternoon, Madam Commissioner, members of the board. My name is Heiko Collinbach. I'm resident of Pine Ridge and the chairman of your aviation advisory board. As many of you most likely know, this board was founded in 1978 by a resolution from your predecessors, basically to act as the eyes and ears of, of the board in all matters related to aviation in Citrus County and to provide you with, with advice and recommendations on anything relating from land acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair, maintenance, and just ongoing facilities at the, in aviation at Citrus County. Over the past few years, the board has been engaged, among other things, in crafting a list of objectives, coherent list of objectives, a vision statement and so forth that I'd like to present to you today. We've done this in, in no small, no small way with, with the help of the late Captain Tom Davis, who provided much, much, much advice and counsel to us as, as a friend and a mentor and was largely responsible for the growth of aviation in this county. And with your indulgence, I'd like to read a little bit from the, from the vision statement and list of objectives that we have. And at that point, we will, I'll be happy to provide each of you with, with a copy of this, as well as the clerk for the, for public records. Our mission statement, as we said, the mission of the Citrus County Advisory Board, Aviation Advisory Board, is to advise the Board of County Commissioners on all matters related to Citrus County public aviation facilities. Our vision, and this is purely our vision, our opinion, that we will, through which we will make all our recommendations to you. The Aviation Advisory Board envisions a continued development of aviation facilities that will provide the public with the greatest range of aviation services practicable, while ensuring that airport development meets the needs of both the public and is compatible with the lifestyle of the community. We have a number of objectives, provide promoting continued development of both airports in Citrus County, Crystal River, and Inverness. Making sure that both airports are fully functional to the greatest extent possible to meet the needs not only of the businesses that are there currently, but businesses that may come in, flyers that may come in both locally and from out of town, and the surrounding neighbors of each airport. Monitoring resident aircraft population to ensure that everybody is, is well cared for, that we're not overbuilding any facility, and again, that the neighbors, the neighbors of the airport are taken into consideration. The value of aviation in this community cannot be measured in very simple terms, but it can be laid out basically in three aspects. Economic, the Florida Department of Transportation did an economic analysis of airports last year, and I believe you have all that information available to you. It's immeasurable, the amount of economic input that aviation provides to our county and to each and every county in Florida. Recreational, of course, the enjoyment of flying. Anybody that goes out and, nice afternoon, go flying. Some of us go boating, others go flying. And I tell you, they're, they're both, they're both wonderful places to be. And then finally, safety. There are many, many opportunities that each of the airports, both Inverness and Crystal River, provide in terms of refuge for folks coming in from, for example, South Florida when, when there's a hurricane down there. Evacuation zones, healthcare zones, places to land. Just the other day, yesterday, there was a medevac helicopter came to Crystal River to pick up a stroke patient and take her to a, to a hospital for a little bit farther away. We have two airports in Citrus County for a reason. We could, and there's been talk of potentially closing them both and creating one central, larger airport somewhere in the middle of the county. That would be more of a one-stop shop. We, on the Aviation Advisory Board, feel that what we have now is better for several reasons. One, each of the airports in and of themselves provides what that area of the county needs. And two, it provides, maintains sort of a small-town community feel, which is what Citrus County has always had. The two smaller airports are closer to the citizens of the county that they serve. Having these two airports means that more folks are that much closer to an airport so that they can go fly anytime they want or have access to it. Thank you very much. We stand ready to do your bidding and be your eyes and ears to the community, to the aviation community. Call on us. We're here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to go to our time certain, a little late, but early. Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak on open to the public at this time? You, you've already spoke, Harvey, at this time. Okay, we will close open to the public. Madam Clerk has let us finish up with this business. I appreciate that. Board, is there any comments? Anybody like to say anything?
I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. In listening to Mr. Gerber, I know you said Commissioner Cannard did not have time to review, I guess, a packet or information, but I don't know, did, if everyone got that. I did not. So I, I heard there, through a grapevine or staff, that there may be something happening, but I, I don't have the information. So I just wanted to make that clear in case that affected other commissioners. So I know a lot of you spoke about the pool open. I just, I don't have the information. You know, and I almost hate to say anything, but to Ms. DeSantis, so much misinformation. The picture you pointed to at the end, like, I own all of that. So there's no cul-de-sac. That's the problem. Trucks can't go in a circle. They make three-point turns, and I have a lot of property damage. And just so everyone's clear, there's no donating. I'm a commissioner now, and just as I will stand up for the rights of everyone here, because I'm a commissioner, I don't get to lose my rights. I get the same rights as everybody else in Citrus County.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Baze, then Commissioner Davis.
Did Sabrina leave?
She left.
I was just curious as to what item on F she was referring to.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I have not really been myself the last couple of meetings. A lot of people here know why. So this is my first opportunity that I've had my whole brain possibly present since November. The animal shelter presentation was, in my 33-year career, possibly the worst I have ever sat through. I should have said so that day, but I, you talk about a deer caught in headlights. I'm like, what? He, they brought up the price tag at the end verbally. There was no backup as to why. I will listen to anyone, even if they have multiplied the budget. But I need to know exactly why. I need line items. I need pivot tables, for any of you Excel nerds who know what those are. I need to know how and why. And that was a ridiculously bad presentation, and we were all caught off guard. We're new commission. We got a new administrator. We got new staff. Give us a chance to right this ship, okay? But not on my watch are we going to do anything stupid with our money, because by the way, I pay taxes too. The pool, I did not get the packet either that I'm aware of. I give kudos to our chair for wanting to fish or cut bait on this. This keeps coming back, round and round and round. I would love to hear what Mr. Gerber is cooking up to serve that community. So we'll see how that discussion goes, but I'm listening. Let me change pages here. And then finally, Mr. Collinbach, Aviation Advisory Board, yes. My dad worked very hard promoting aviation in this county. And many of you probably don't know, but many years, we moved here in 1978. And not too long after that, I think it was probably about 10 years later, we were one wavering B O C C vote away from selling both airports. Selling the land, because there were people who had probably, you know, just, they didn't get aviation at all. And that was a really scary time, and he pulled that out of the fire. And because of that, we have everything that Mr. Collinbach said. I love the small-town quality of life. Reason to have the two airports versus one in the center. One in the center would also be enormously more expensive. We would not recoup what we put into the two airports. So that's kind of a dead deal, I think, at this point. But disaster recovery, medical flights, economic development, careers. People who own airplanes own houses that actually pay taxes. A whole lot of folks, because of homestead exemption, actually don't pay into our tax system. You could be a homeowner and not pay into our tax system enough to pay for the services that you get from this county. We need folks that have more expensive houses. They own businesses. They provide careers. And they provide the type of environment that allows us to have a medical community that can take all, take care of all of us as we get older. Because I'm not that old per se, but I've lived really hard, so sometimes I feel like I'm about 90. My dad and I were having a race to the end on that. And that's all I have. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, I, I'll address the pool issue because, as was mentioned by name, but our, our agendas are printed a week in advance. That's for everybody to look at, the agenda items. The backup material is due at the same time. I hope that we don't start going down the road of being able to add additional information, additional stuff to the agenda right up through the date of the meeting. I don't believe that that is, that that is fair for the commissioners up here, nor do I think it's fair for the public that may, that may see something and go, I want to give input on that. Because, you know, and I'm not suggesting that I'm opposed to what Mr. Gerber's bringing forward, but there may be folks out there who do not want us to, to table this issue any longer. It's been going on and on and on and on for years, and we've done nothing with it. Maybe that's on the Board of County Commissioners. Maybe that's just not being forceful enough to say, look, the public support has not been there for this, and that's why we're in the situation we're in. But we can't continue to add new stuff to the agenda right up, right up until the day of the, day of the meeting and go, oh, yeah, by the way, read this while you're going through the rest of your, your agenda. So anyway, I hope that we can get back to the agenda items. The material for the agenda is due well in advance of the, I think it's typically that Friday morning before the Tuesday that the agenda is printed. That gives everybody a fair opportunity to review what it is we're going to be talking about and voting on.
Thank you. I also don't have the information. Doug has it. I think you need to give it to the clerk, have it entered onto the public record. Madam Attorney, do you have anything to, about that? We do need more than, at 12:15, I was told that it was there. I, I, there's no way. I would have loved to have seen that sooner. I'd be happy, are you going to enter it into public record? Thank you. But we, I, I, I think that's a hard and fast rule that we need to have it. There's, this is a small agenda, and it is a lot to digest in six days. I, I spend every Saturday and Sunday before the meetings doing nothing but my research and reading. So I, I will always support that we need to get that well in advance so that we can digest it. The shelter. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. You handled that beautifully. The shelter needs to be in an area, we've asked for a $9 million shelter, but it needs to be in an area that is not in, right in the line of an evacuation zone. And that's why we have been very purposeful. The county doesn't own anything that would accommodate that. There is the private sector that might have some abandoned buildings, but this is a county service. So it, it is a county responsibility. So, but, and also Bacon Group did have an opportunity to bid on this, and I don't know what happened there. But the, it has been told to me that I got $22 million for Beverly Hills. And you brought up 22 million. I forgot about that. If I got $22 million for Beverly Hills, let me tell you, we would be sitting pretty. I had asked the governor and the state of Florida for $850,000 for the Beverly Hills Park. I have fought for the two years that I've been on this board to open that pool up. I've met with Mr. Gerber. I think that community deserves a pool. But it was closed before I got on board, and I did not have the support to open it back up. It has gone beyond, we need to figure this out. That pool is not, was not supported by Beverly Hills. The community had it. They couldn't support it. They couldn't afford it. It was given to the county. The county had it for a while, and, and there just wasn't the support there. Does that make me sad? Yes. I, I, I believe, I've lived in District Three for 28 years. We deserve that. But is it this pool? I don't, I think that time has come and gone. If I had gotten 22 million, believe me, that'd have been the first thing we did. Like I said, I had an ask. It made it all the way to the governor's desk, and it was vetoed. And it was very sad, and, you know, that's at the governor's, you know, that's the governor's prerogative. And I will try again, but we need to move on. It is not healthy. It is not serving any purpose for Beverly Hills right now. It has been empty and, and degrading for quite some time. Open to the public, Deb? That's the rights of us as Americans. They can come up here. They can read the Gettysburg Address if they want to. They can do what they want in their three minutes. Would I like some of it to stop? Yes. Would I like people to stop yelling at me? Yes. But they have that right. And I don't know any other way to, to stop open to the public because we, you know, everybody deserves their voice. And that's all I have. Thank you for the aviation board. My father was also a pilot. You know that. United Airlines, World War II. So I'm big aviation. Without aviation, a community will starve to death. Thank you. Anything else? No? So let's move on to time certain, and thank you for your patience, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, commissioners. Mr. Howard, welcome. I think this is the first meeting I've been in attendance with you. And Denise, always nice to see everyone and participate. We have for you this afternoon the annual presentation of our investment performance. I know it's almost a cringe-worthy time for anybody in the investment world. But we are, do we have that up? Okay. So first of all, let me start by saying we are going to be changing this particular agenda item. I'm not adding anything to the agenda item. I'm taking something away. Just let me clarify that. Part of the presentation that we presented to you, part of the, what you received as a PowerPoint actually contained, the last slide in that PowerPoint presentation contained the investment policy recommendation. contained the investment policy recommendations. We are pulling just that one page of the recommendations because since that time, we have received the bids. We, we are currently, um, out to bid for our investment, um, company. And though we, we find that it's, there is a, a, a very, um, uh, high, um, chance that we will have additional policy changes. Um, so we are pulling those policy recommendations, and we'll come back to you once that bid is completed. And if, with the policy changes that we had, we just thought, why do it now? Um, we'll just come back and do that later. So just wanted to make you, um, aware of that. Uh, what you have, uh, what we're gonna go through now is just a very brief PowerPoint.
Madam Clerk, the pages you're pulling in the packet are, do you know the numbers?
The policy revisions is on page 418 of the backup.
Very good.
It's, uh, Agenda Item H1.
I got that.
And it's po, it's, uh, actually page 418 is where the policy revisions were included.
Thank you.
This is a very brief PowerPoint, um, but it simply states, "Our investment strategy has been to stay the course through these challenging times." Um, and you see that, uh, for the fiscal year ending September the 30th, there was a recorded loss of 691,000. Um, please be in, uh, aware that that is an unrealized loss. Um, it is just a reflection of the market value of those investments held by the county at September the 30th. And it is required by the financial reporting standards. Our actual realized gains, um, are 1.5 million. The long-term portfolio exceeded the benchmark by 36 basis points for the year ending, uh, third, September 30th, 2022. The next slide shows you basically what your portfolio, what the county's portfolio is made up of. Um, it is a combination of cash and money market accounts, different treasury bills, different trust accounts. And then there are, uh, investments in the local, uh, government investment pools as allowed by Florida statute. Every, um, uh, instrument that we per, that is purchased through, uh, our, and, um, through the advisor, everything that we do has to be guided by, uh, the Florida statutes and also the county as adopted, uh, policy county. Um, and the next just simply shows you the oversight and governance, uh, of, um, our policy, um, uh, framework. And it's, of course, the Florida statutes, um, the Association of Public Treasurers of U.S. and Canada, and then, of course, the GFOA best practices, GFA being the Government Finance Officers, um, Association. Now, I wanted to give you some encouragement. There is a document that you received in your packets that shows the ending balance of, um, uh, the 688,000 or 691,000, which again is an unrecorded loss. The document that Tracy, uh, my Chief of Staff, Tracy Phillips, is providing to you is the ending number for December. So I just wanted you to be encouraged that you are not, that we, uh, are on the rise and on the move back up with our, um, investment earnings. It has been a very challenging, uh, two years. I, um, have been, uh, thankful for my team and for the advice of, um, PFM as we have tried to navigate through these very, um, challenging waters. But as I said, uh, there are, uh, strong indicators that we are, uh, heading in a better direction. Uh, Madam Chair, I, um, will be happy to answer any questions, um, at this time.
Thank you. Board, any questions? Commissioner Bayes.
Does this represent the, um, boards, the funds, the, or the board's policy between 8% and 17% of reserves? Is that what these funds are made up of?
No. No, um, what is represented in the investment portfolio is any surplus funds. Uh, that is a moving target at all times. Any funds that are, are taken in that are, um, surplus of what is needed for the general operations of the county. Uh, by statute, we can invest those funds. Your reserve funds, uh, is at 15% right now. Um, policy, I think, is 18, a minimum of eight, uh, maximum of 17%. Right now, it's at 15%. These funds, um, uh, would, are not in direct correlation with the reserve funds of your county. We aren't restricted to just investing the reserve funds. It's any funds that are available above what is needed for operating surplus funds.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board? Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, that does lend the question, if it's, I thought it was 16.3%, unless that was last year. But, uh, those reserve funds that we are putting away, um, where's the investment? Or do you know where the investment in those funds are?
In governmental, in governmental accounting, all of your, um, money is, it's a pool of cash. And that pool of cash is made up of multiple, um, revenues, types of revenues. Your 15% reserve funds, um, is part of that cash that is invested. That is not invested independent of the rest of your pooled cash. So it's not like you take that reserve percentage, whatever that reserve percentage is at the time, because it is a moving target based on your use. We don't take that particular, um, percentage and sit it in its own investment fund. All of your excess surplus funds are invested in multiple, um, uh, uh, vehicles to maximize the return on those. Does that make sense? It's, unless you, um, uh, governmental accounting is a, is a little bit different, and, um, it takes, uh, what would help is a flow chart. I believe you did sign up for the orientation. And part of the orientation training that we offer to commissioners is walking you through that flow chart so you see where these different pockets of money are and how the whole story comes together. I'm sorry, I'm not very good at articulating that particular flow chart. And I would, I would offer, again, for, uh, any, any commissioners that, we are, we love talking about this stuff, and we, uh, are very happy to provide any type of, um, education and, um, training and collaboration on it. So anytime, my door is always open, and that orientation, again, is a great opportunity for that.
Commissioner Bayes.
So I, Finch reported as of January 17th, 2023. Uh, current developments, the county has experienced continued improvement in its tax base, moderate populate, population past several years, prudent management changes in revenues to meet expenditures. The county, uh, ended fiscal year '21 with a net operating surplus of 12.7 million, leading to an unrestricted fund balance committed assigned and unassigned of 37.8 million or 34% of its spending. Does that accurately, I know that timeframe-wise may be a little bit off, but is that accurate of this report?
Those are two different subjects altogether. Um, this is your investment portfolio, it's the performance of the portfolio. What you're speaking about is the operating, um, balance at the end of the, I believe the, this, or whatever date that was reported on. So it's, it's, it's two different, um, uh, um, a- accounting, um, uh, environments that you're talking, that you're speaking of. What this is, is your investment portfolio, which is into, it's all of the money that the county has to put into investments. What you're speaking of is your, um, your balance sheet, basically, for lack of a better term.
But I thought you just said a minute ago, it was, you were talking about this was our operating, this was investing of our operating budget monies.
Okay, go ahead, maybe you could say it better than me, Tracy.
Can I, can I say something? I thought that the, Madam Clerk said excess funds, including the reserve funds, not the operating.
Yeah. Excess of your operating funds that are needed for operating is what gets invested.
So this report that you have in front of you, it will show, um, our bank account, which has our operating funds in it, our truest account. But the rest of those funds that are down there are our, all of our investment funds, and you are earning interest on your truest account. Um, those funds that are represented on the sheet are made up of surplus funds, restricted funds, or obligated funds. So you have these projects that are going on throughout the county. Those are also included in this. This is not just operational or surplus, it's everything. Does that help explain?
Yes and no, but that's kind of what I said. If it is a surplus, if that's part of our reserves, that's what you're kind of saying, is that it's a surplus.
Surplus and the reserves are two different things. Your reserve is, um, uh, surplus is, is what's in, uh, in, uh,
So we would have
in excess of what you need for your general operating of the, of, of the county. For instance, we have meetings on a monthly basis with, um, the, uh, investment firm and also with, uh, county, um, uh, leadership in the county. And the conversations are specific to what are your cash flow needs? So if you have cash flows, if the county has a project, if they have, um, a payment that's coming up on something, and we know that we cannot, um, uh, invest some of those funds, we need to hold those in a liquid position so that you can make those payments. Um, that money is not in part of your investment. It's, it's not put into an investment pool, whether it's a month, or six months, or a year, or three years. That money has to stay in a liquid position. And that's what Tracy was trying to explain, is that truest, it's, it's sitting in the general fund, it's sitting in your bank account, it's sitting in your bank. And then the other things that are on your investment portfolio, um, are, uh, some of those are bonds that, uh, are, uh, out for several years. Some of those, the Florida Prime is an overnight, uh, it's a day-to-day investment. Florida, uh, Florida Class, Florida Palm is, uh, a day-to-day investment where we can choose anywhere from 30 years to 30 month, 30 days to six months to a year. Uh, where, we're gonna place those funds in whatever place where we're gonna get the greatest, um, return with the least amount of risk.
Madam Chair, uh, Madam Clerk. And please excuse if I don't get this right, because
It's okay.
I've tried very hard
Doing very well explaining it.
To grab a hold of, to wrap my brain around government accounting, even though I'm business administration major, I love accounting. I look at this, the way I looked at it was, um, you know, a company gets their, their, their money for jobs. And those jobs might not be completed for six months. And so as a business, I would put that in a sweep account to collect interest on it and then pull from that as it's needed. Is it similar to that?
Parts of it.
Okay.
Parts of it are, you could do that, yes.
So this, is this, uh,
That's kind of, that, that's kind of what I was just saying about the cash flow.
Yes.
You know, we can, we, the money comes in from the tax revenues, it comes in from gas tax, it comes in from impact fees. Um, it comes in through your enterprise fund with the landfill and the utilities. All of that money goes into a pooled cash. There are, um, uh, pockets of that money that are restricted. There are, um, uh, certain parts of that money that you, um, have to be dedicated to that, such as your enterprise funds, can't use it for anything else. But all of that money, to what extent we can, is included on that spreadsheet. And we are placing it in whatever vehicle we can to, um, get, uh, earnings to, uh, earn investment on it. I am really messing this up.
No, I, I, I think, I, I think I think I have it, because for instance, we get the ad valorem taxes, and there's, you know, they're, they're paid to us. But we don't have to make a check to the clerk, but every quarter. Would some of that money be put into a sweep account?
That's include, it's not a sweep, we, I don't think we have any sweep accounts.
That's the only way, that's the only way I can describe it for, um, layman's terms.
And it's on that spreadsheet, that, those monies are included in the total amount invested on that spreadsheet that you have in front of you. And it's, and it changes every day.
Yes.
You know, it changes every day.
Yes.
So, that's just, um, it's good, it's important to remember that that's just a snapshot in time. Um, you know, what that spreadsheet is, is a snapshot.
But this money is not tied up, but it is building, it is collecting what interest it could get, even if it's only one day of interest.
Part of the money is tied up, if you will. Uh, there are part of those, uh, monies, I think the last two lines of that specifically are bonds. And that money will, those instruments will be held to maturity. Because if I don't hold them to maturity, then I, you will have to book a loss. So we hold those until they mature to par, so that the county does not lose any money on those investments.
And the bond line is which line?
TD.
I was gonna say, is it TD, well?
FLG, Florida Local Government Investment.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry, thank you, I see that, yes.
I, I would love, um, I love the opportunity to sit down with any of you with any questions. So we'll, we'll walk you through, walk you through all of it.
Well, I, I'm signed up for the third year.
Okay.
And I still have, you know, it's, it's not easy, but, yeah.
Come on down, we'll talk about it.
And then I get more confused after each meeting, but
Well, with my gibberish today, it's easy to understand why.
Thank you. Anything else?
I will definitely be visiting with you.
Commissioner Davis?
I love it, thank you, Commissioner Bayes.
I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much.
So. H1. Board, I'm looking for a motion to approve and adopt the updated county investment policy.
Motion approved.
Second. And a motion from Commissioner Kennard, a second from Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any other?
So, um, the investment policy, we pulled that part of it because we cannot, so I think they're two different. The, the only thing I think that would be an action item would be the investment policy on that particular agenda item. And we pulled that because we are going to be bringing that back.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did say
I'm so sorry, yes, ma'am.
So we, you need approval of, is this just a, a
It's just a presentation. It's just a presentation that we are required to, um, present to the board by policy. Um, uh, but the policy itself, um, we cannot bring that back to you until we make those other changes.
So this, uh, so we need to, um,
Not do anything.
No vote.
It's, it's informational only, okay. Staff, I, okay.
My apologies, being clear.
I rescind my
Thank you, Commissioner Bayes.
I rescind my motion.
Okay. And thank you for this presentation.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so we are back to E, regular business. Board, would you prefer to take the bids in, in their entirety or approve them individually? What is your pleasure?
Entire.
Thank you, I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard. E1, A through E, and I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment about E? Seeing none, board, is there any comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It is 4-0 right now. Okay. E2. Budget transfers. Looking for a motion to approve the budget transfers for the Visitor and Convention Bureau, EMS, Utilities, County Administrators for Fiscal Year, Administrator for Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bays and Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment about E two? Seeing none, board, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero right now. Thank you. E three, budget resolution. Adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution amending adopting various budgets and low-income home energy assistance program grants for the but grant budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Motion to approve item E three.
Thank you, Commissioner Cannard, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment about E three? Seeing none, any board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's four zero at right now. E four, Garcia Point Septic to Sewer Project Amendment Three. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute amendment number three to agreement of LP zero nine zero one seven between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Citrus County, Florida. Board, what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve E four.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan and Commissioner Cannard. Any public comment on E four? Seeing none, any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero. Commissioner Davis, I'm looking for um your vote on E one, A through E.
Aye.
And E two?
Aye.
E three?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, E five, approved purchase of census water meters. Approve the purchase of those water meters in the amount of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Board?
Chair, motion to approve E five.
Commissioner Davis, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Cannard, is there any public comment about these water sensors? Seeing none, any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes four zero, thank you. E six, drug and alcohol rules for commercial driver license holders. Authorize the chairman to approve the drug and alcohol rules for commercial driver license holder policy and remove AR seven point zero five dash two. Board, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve E six.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan and Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. E seven, state aid to library grant agreement for fiscal year 2023. It's A and B, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the state aid to libraries grant agreement between the Florida Department of State, Division of Library and Information Services in Citrus County, Florida, for fiscal year 2023. Estimated grant amount is fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. There are no matching funds required. And B, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the supporting documents, including the certificate of hours, certification of hours, free library service, access to material forms, and the annual plan of service for fiscal year 2023. Board, I'm looking for a motion for E seven.
Motion to approve E seven, A and B.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cannard, and thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment about E seven, A and B? Seeing none, any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Passes five zero. E eight, core civic contract monitoring update for December twenty twenty-two. Okay.
Motion to approve item E eight.
Second.
Commissioner Cannard? Commissioner Finnegan?
Bless.
Bless you. Any public comment on E eight, core civic contract monitoring update? Seeing none? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero, thank you. E nine, airport ground lease for Royal Oaks of Citrus Homeowners Association, Inc. This is to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the airport ground lease agreement between Citrus County and this uh HOA. Looking for a motion for E nine?
Make a motion to approve E nine?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan, and thank you, Commissioner Cannard, for the second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero. We are now at Agenda Item F, outstanding commission items. F one.
Um, item number two, approval to remove, completed at the last board meeting.
Thank you. So. So we are gonna remove
Item number two.
Number two, that is completed.
It's
Is it completed?
Chair?
It was approved.
This is this twenty twenty-three.
Oh, no.
Yeah, this is, this is approved at the last board meeting to move forward on that rate study.
Oh, okay, yes, thank you. The rate study is approved, okay, so we need to remove two. Board, is there anything else you would like to discuss or remove? Commissioner Bays?
Yes, um, on the number six, for the uh Inverness Airport.
Yes?
We did have a meeting with um Mary Jensen and Walt and a few others. And supply, I had reached out to the UPO about some uh what their wish list was. And I've provided that, so I don't know what the proper protocol or procedure would be to actually start to identify those with staff and get them working on those. But they do have that list now.
Well, we'll take care of it.
Okay. So board, F one, I'm looking for a motion to approve with the deletion of item F one two.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Bays, and the second?
Second.
Commissioner Davis? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on F one, commission items? Any further board discussion? Yes, Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, just um regarding Commissioner Bays' uh comments on item number six there. I would like to see before uh before any type of process begins to take place to um evaluate uh this this wish list um from the FBO. I think that's something that ultimately, the um uh the payment for these things is gonna come back on on the county. So I think that it should be, um, these items should be an agenda item that the board would discuss what it is they're looking for, what's the benefit uh to the county, what's the benefit to the airport. Uh, I'd like, I, rather rather than it just ultimately becoming, this is what we're doing at the Inverness Airport, I'd like to make sure that that's a a public discussion that's had by the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Um, to add a little bit more um backstory on this, this was a very tiny pot of, believe it or not, COVID money that was offered to the, each airport got as a grant.
Mm-hmm.
And um Crystal Aero Group from Crystal River Airport put in plans to match that grant, to not match it with money, but to something right-sized to fill that grant money. And um I met with Wright Rudder and kind of bugged him multiple times. I'm glad he finally put in his list.
Yep.
I'm not sure what the criteria was, it was some automatic grant that we just got, more or less. But for some reason, I don't I don't know what the criteria was, but Crystal River got, I want to say twice what Inverness got. And we're talking s- pretty small money. I I want to say it was on the order of like nine and eighteen, or thirteen and twenty thousand, something like that. It was very, very small money, so they couldn't think real big on this.
Right.
But it was wasted money if we don't use it.
Yeah.
And so I know the owner of Crystal Aero Group, the FBO there, was looking at doing like a front porch and an exterior bathroom.
Okay.
So pilots that come in after hours have facilities. Um, and I spitballed some ideas with Andy from Wright Rudder to something that would fit that level of grant money.
Yeah.
I think from anything bigger, where the county is going to be expending potentially other funds that are more open to use, because this has to be for the airport, the funds I'm talking about.
Right.
Then absolutely, that needs to be part of a master plan for each of those individual airports. And um our chair actually brought this up, I think at our first retreat two years ago. We reached, you know, I basically grew up at Crystal Airport, so you become blind to stuff, you know? And um the chair's the one who had to point out to me, marketing person, which kind of shocked me, but thank you for doing that, we're a good team. Um, she said at the retreat that that is the front door for all of our economic development, for anybody who's flying in on a jet. So all of that has to be in a master, sort of a master viewpoint for both of those. So, and absolutely, where tax dollars are concerned, we need to be on top of it.
I um, I do remember the small amounts that you're talking about, those those two grants, I don't remember
RSA, it was something RSA, I can't remember what it was called.
But I um, I I still think before that money, e- even though that may not necessarily be coming out of the general fund, before that money is spent, or before we give our blessing to these projects, if it's a a five thousand dollar project or a ten thousand dollar project, we should at least know, you know, they're gonna build an overhang over the entrance. They're gonna put plants in, they're gonna do irrigation for the plants or parking lot expansion, whatever it might be. Uh, I'd like to see what what that list of of projects.
Hundred percent agree.
Alright, very good, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Bays.
Just as clarification, it's not intended to be that, it's just when I asked to have a meeting about the master plan, I reached out to them to find out kind of what their wish list was, because I keep seeing on this, have not received information from Wright Rudder. So, not to violate sunshine, I can't supply that information to you, but it's, we have talked about it, it's there. I think, you know, some of it has merit, some of it, you know, we may not want to do anything with, but it's there, and I think it's at least a an opportunity to get it on our list, start to have those conversations, and have a plan for um our airport going forward.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Now, we are up here, Madam Attorney, we're up here. Is there something, if she wants to discuss something, it it's in the sunshine right now, correct?
Oh, yeah, I it was just, it's just the the list that I received from Wright Rudder, because I see it on this report over and over every month, it says, haven't received information from Wright Rudder, that's not accurate at this point. So, that's all I'm offering up, is that we have that information internally. I think it's a great opportunity that we can have these conversations with, and briefings with the other commissioners, and let them vet the process.
Yes, so as soon as possible, if we could get that list, I would appreciate it. And um I do agree that, I think, if there is something that's going to be addressed, that it should be on the agenda so that we as a board can look at it, and the public will have an opportunity to see what is being done. Is there any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Um, all in favor of pa- um, accepting F one? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Thank you. G, County Administrator, Mr. Steve Howard.
Yes, we are uh asking approval for the confirmation of the Community Services Director. Uh, the Community Services Director position recently became vacant due to the promotion of Marisol Rodriguez as the Assistant County Administrator. We are pleased to recommend the appointment of Eric Head as a Community Services Director. Uh, so obviously, a lot of great things he's done for this community. And he's a great asset, and he's gonna do a great job uh in this position. So strongly recommend his confirmation today. And his start date will actually be February the sixth. And if there's an error on there, it says today, uh but it'll be the sixth.
Madam Chair?
It'll be for Feb- the confirmation February sixth?
Effective, that'll be his start date.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Davis?
I make a motion that we confirm the appointment of Eric Head as Community Services Director effective February sixth.
Second.
Thank you. The motion from Commissioner Davis, second from Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment about G one? Seeing none, any other board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That passes five zero, congratulations, Mr. Head. Thank you. G two, Commissioner, mi- excuse me, Mr. Howard.
Uh, we also gotta stay local with this one, which I'm proud of as well. Uh, so the Economic Development Director position has been vacant uh for over a year now. Uh, we are pleased to recommend the appointment of Frank Calashon uh as the Economic Development Director. He has a master's degree, Bachelor of Science as well, in Business Management and Finance. Um, also, uh, he has the Certified Economic Development Credential, which is highly sought after. Um, and also, he currently serves in Sumter County over five years. So strongly recommend his approval today, he'll he'll hit the ground running. I've been pleased so far with interactions with him to date. He's prepared to actually be tomorrow, the strategic strategic planning session as well, to hit the ground running. So I do think we're at a pivotal moment in Citrus County, we can't be on the sidelines. Only citrus can hold citrus back. So it's important to proactively engage uh co- the community as well, build the relationships, even with the current businesses that are here today for retention, but helping them grow as well, as well as looking at the future of this community. So strongly recommend his appointment today, confirmation.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, um, one moment, please. Um, and Mr. Howard, um, Mr. Calashon?
Calashon.
Guess what I thought I said, Calashon, thank you. Um, he lives local, correct?
He does, he also has a a child in the school system as well. Actually, he applied for the job previously. Um, so timing was better, I think, this time, because he's got over five years. I did give you an additional law document that kind of shows some of the the achievements he's had over the last five years, which was millions of dollars of investment for that community. So I do think he's the right fit uh for citrus moving this uh community forward at this at this moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Do it, what is the start date?
It would be also February the sixth.
February sixth.
Then I'll make a motion um to confirm uh Frank Calashonio's Economic Development Director effective February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, thank you. The motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on G two? Seeing none, any further board comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bays, you have the floor.
I'm not opposed, and I'm sure that, you know, he, this gentleman is the right pick, but I feel like with us having a board retreat, if you will, tomorrow, I I think it would be prudent if we postpone this until the next time to be able to discuss this. I heard it said by my fellow Commissioner Cannard um about Inverness Village Four, unless you're willing to put the skin in the game um with that project. And that's kind of how I feel about this. It's been a long time. I asked staff to actually uh give my fellow commissioners economic development reports that were created back in twenty twelve, and an update by the Tampa Bay Regional Area Planning Council in eighteen. And these reports are all indicative of the same thing, we have no shovel-ready projects. And every time you hire an economic development person, they're looking, and if you're going to attract somebody, they're looking for shovel-ready projects. And um I want to know that this board is committed, that we've identified our assets, our funding, and what are we going to do to get these projects that we can actually give him the tools in the toolbox to go out and do what we've hired him to do. And that's all I'm asking, is that we can vet the process tomorrow through our retreat and know that we are a committed board.
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone else? I I I agree with um Commissioner Bays in a s- in a sense, most of it. I do believe that the, this um economic development strategic plan that was supplied to us, I've read it. Um, I'm glad to see there's some direction that we have been going in. This was from two thousand and thirteen. Uh, there's some areas where we failed. I would recommend that if this gentleman is confirmed, that he look at this like a Bible, just in a way, get rid of the things that are outdated, but um
He's already received it.
Oh, very good.
He's already received that in other documentation as well.
Very good. Um, I did believe, I I always thought that we didn't have anything really shovel-ready, but we, there is Metacrest that is shovel-ready, I believe. but we, there is Metacrest that is shovel-ready, I believe. And how close are we at the Inverness Airport Industrial Park to being shovel-ready? So, I just am curious if which one of us has been given the right information.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in the middle.
No, my comments would be that, you know, you gotta be proactive, not reactive. Actually, Frank's actually got stuff shovel-ready too, so he's done both things. So I think there's different strategies you use in the position that he's in. Some could be grant writing, a variety of things, but I do think he's the right fit and still strongly support his confirmation today. I think it's critically important that we send a message that we're open for business. And I think any further delay could send a very bad signal.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, I, I have tremendous amount of respect for where Commissioner Bayes is coming from, but I think today, what the administrator is asking us for is to help him build his team and then it's up to us to not get in the way of that. I mean, we're the ones that set policy, but it's our county administrator and the team of directors that he builds to carry out that policy. Tomorrow is about us setting forth that strategic plan and saying, all right, Mr. Administrator, this is our strategic plan, you and your directors, it's your job to carry it out. So if, if, if Mr. Howard believes that, I walked myself right into this one. Mr. Calasione, is that right?
Calashonie.
Calashonie, sorry about that, is the right guy, then I am, I am on board one hundred percent. And I intend, I intend to, to support this. In fact, I would make the nomination and I'm looking forward to our strategic planning meeting tomorrow so that we can not only continue to make these plans and talk about these different initiatives, but as Commissioner Bayes said, put your money where your mouth is, where are we gonna fund these things? What's the timeline for getting these things done? And I've got one project front and center that you'll hear about at nine o'clock tomorrow morning that we have talked about for years now. And we either need to get it across the line or we need to kill it.
Thank you.
So I would make the motion that we.
Well, we already have a motion on the floor.
All right, we have a second?
And we have a second.
All right.
So you would just, you would be the third, so, thank you. Commissioner Davis.
I hundred percent agree with Commissioner Kennard that Mr. Howard is trying to build his team and we are going to definitely support everything. I will say to Commissioner Bayes' point, I love how you think, it's silly to, you can't, we can hire somebody to run economic development, but if we don't give him the tools to succeed, what's the point? So my intent is to give him the tools. Sounds like several of us, our intent is to give him the tools, probably all of us. And I will say, Mr. Calashonie, it is much easier to say your name than the last gentleman who held that seat, so.
Thank you.
We just called him Dave because it was just too rough on the last name.
Thank you, and I was remiss in not asking Mr. Head if he would like to address the board and I will also give you that opportunity after our vote, so, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Davis, a second, we've had public comment, we've had board discussion. We've seen there's no further board discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So we have a four one vote, thank you. Mr. Head, Mr. Calashonie, would you like to speak? And welcome aboard, congratulations.
No, I would just say, I very much appreciate your confidence and support and I'm looking forward to working with a fantastic team of division directors and helping them get their job done, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you for the vote of confidence and I grew up in this area, I'm committed to this community. I came back to raise my children in this community. So I definitely have a lot of skin in the game, I think this is a unique moment for Citrus County. We've got the leadership on the dais, we've got the leadership over here in a strong county administrator. I've got a great track record in Sumter County, we did a billion dollars in commercial and a billion dollars in residential development last year, well, in the last year, yeah, that's correct. In the five years, we've doubled the growth in manufacturing jobs, so I am a certified economic developer, you hired the right person. Thirty percent of the folks that take that exam pass it on the first try, so, and I did pass on my first try, so. We've got the tools, we've got the toolkits, we will take direction from you, meaning Mr. Howard and myself. And we can move the county forward, again, it's a unique moment. If we don't have enough industrial land, we can make it and I'll work with the Planning and Growth Directors to do that. We've done it in Sumter County to the tune of about 500 acres of industrial and, you know, we teed up about a thousand additional acres, so we can do it. I think this community is ready for this and high-quality jobs, good quality of life, that's what we're after. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, yes, Commissioner Bayes.
Yes.
I just want to welcome you aboard, it is nothing personal, it's just, I have been at this a long time and I just am very cautious. When we can't pave our roads, where are we gonna find the money to put into these projects to make you successful? And so I want to wish you the best of luck, I want to welcome you aboard, go forth and do great things. So I just, I wanted to tell you, it's not, it's not a personal thing with me, it's just, I want to make sure that we're all beating to the same drum.
Absolutely, and, you know, five years with the Sumter County Board of County Commissioners, it's about getting the job done and I'll work for each of you and for the citizens, but again, we, we can do this, I know we can. Thanks.
One, any other comments? I just want to tell you, welcome aboard, I'm really looking forward to some of the grants that you're gonna bring and I know you're gonna bring them.
Yep.
And I think that is an area that we, we have stumbled on. You know, we have not always met the mark, so thank you and you've, we're watching you, so.
I'm excited, I do like grant writing and that extends to public works and anything else that economic development can be helpful with, again.
And all of us will be your biggest cheerleader, so, welcome aboard.
To working with you all and tomorrow as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we are now at I Advisory Board Announcements, Nominations and Appointments. So I1, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Nomination and Appointment. We're looking for four positions and the positions available are the Banking Representative, Essential Services Personnel Representative, Home Building Trades Representative and Residential Home Building Industry Representative. Board, what is your pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Davis.
I move that we approve Lori Hamilton, Carmen Hernandez, Bruce Kaufman and Willie White.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment about I1? Seeing none, any further board comments, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. Thank you, and thank you for those applicants that are willing to serve. I2 is the Beverly Hills Advisory Council Nomination and Appointment. There are three positions available. Board, what is your pleasure with I2?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve James Barrows, my friend Cynthia Oswald, who I see in the audience, Eric Stawicki, to the Beverly Hills Advisory Council.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment on I2? Seeing none, any board comments? Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, that passes five zero, thank you. I3, Citrus Springs Advisory Council Nominate and Appoint, we're looking for one individual for Citrus Spring Advisory Council.
Madam Chair, I have a question on this.
Yes.
So the roster shows a vacant position? So one person applied to be reappointed and then we have a second person who applied for the first time? Why is the vacant position not being filled?
That is a good question.
Is Mary in the audience? Thank you.
It is an error, it's actually two positions. One is a reappointed, Louise, she's been there, done great, and the other is Vince, so it is two appointments.
That makes this so much easier.
I'm so sorry for the error.
Thank you, no problem.
So Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Louise Bono and appoint Vince Micklin to the Citrus Springs Advisory Council.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Bayes, thank you, is there any public comment on I3? Seeing none? Board, any board comment? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, that passes five zero and thank you to those two individuals that are willing to serve. I4, Planning and Development Commission, nominate and appoint two, and we're sure of two, right, Joanne? Is she here? Two regular members. Board, what is your pleasure for I4?
Does everybody want me to just keep going?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Kennard.
I would make a motion that we approve Carol Scragg and Timothy Gilbert.
Second.
That's not what I'm looking at.
I4.
I have Royce and Faismar.
Yeah.
Let me see.
They're the two alternates, those are the two alternates.
Yeah, all right, I apologize. Then I would make the motion that we reappoint Faismar and Royce.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Kennard for Faismar and Royce and a second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comment on I4? Board comment, I thought you were seeing something I didn't have there, so thank you.
I apologize.
No, no problem, don't do it again. And all in favor, board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and that passes five zero, thank you. We are now at Agenda Item J, Committee Reports from Commissioners, who would like to start?
I can.
Commissioner Finnegan, you have the floor.
We haven't quite had a real board meeting yet with Career Source, but within the state, it looks like the state's kind of reaching out and seeing how they can redistrict the areas. And of course, Citrus, Marion and Levy want to stay together and that was the goal of it, I don't know how it's gonna shake out. But that, that's what's happening in the state. And then I had met recently with Jean McGee and just learned the update on our three appropriation projects, the Halls River Road Multi-Use Path, the Homosassa Non-Potable Water and then the Inverness Airport and which she's working diligently, trying to get the money for, of course, and county's working on getting the information to our Senator and Representative.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, I had a Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and I'm happy to say that we approved $450,000 to Habitat that will go towards, provide $18,000 apiece towards 25 Habitat Homes. That helps to reduce their, the principal loan, so ultimately, the principal naturally that these homeowners will be facing is lower and they're, they're able to more easily qualify for that first loan. So we approved that at our meeting, it was last Wednesday.
Very good news, thank you. Commissioner Bayes.
Yes, I had a water board meeting and Commissioner Kennard was not there, so he was nominated Chair.
So we get to Water Board, Commissioner Kennard.
Favorite board.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Congratulations.
So what happens when you don't show up? I only had TDC, we continue to knock it out of the park. We have occupancy rate in our hotels was up 16% year-over-year. That's 16% of the percentage, the total was 72%. Average daily rate was up 18% and revenue was up 37% on room rates, so that's all really good news. We're doing a cool 3D app, which essentially makes it look like, it's almost like a 3D movie type thing, but it's an app that's gonna be in position in a couple of Zoo Tampa and the Cincinnati Zoo. We just approved that for a whole weekend of, both of those zoos have rescue manatees in their zoo and so there'll be a whole ecological awareness, ecotourism around the manatee in both of those zoos. So that'll be a pretty cool thing, this app we approved last year and can't wait to get it finally out, it'll be out sometime this year, so. Be really cool. That's all I got.
Thank you, and I have the Veterans Advisory Board and the good news was from Congressman Gus Villarocas and the money that he was able, he's able to get for the veterans. And I cannot bring the amount forward, Marisol might remember the amount. I was gonna say 13, it is 15.3, okay. So that was very good news, excited for what he's bringing to us, his love for the veterans and that's all I have. So now we, Commissioner Finnegan, is there anything else you would like to discuss this time? Commissioner Kennard.
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner Bayes. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, ma'am, had a meeting with some of the primary folks that sort of lead Inverness Village is for last week and we, the staff may have figured out a way through this that might actually be palatable also. They're gonna go back and do a little bit more homework, the residents, and we're gonna meet again in a month, so we'll see how this goes. So stay tuned, just know I'm, I'm trying to bring this in for a landing in a palatable way.
Very good, okay. So Item O is my agenda item. I brought this forward and put it on the agenda because this has gone on in my district since 2019 and the time has come that this pool is not sustainable as where it's at. The previous board approved $32,000 in the budget to go ahead and just have a wake and finish this project and move on. And so as the chairman, I feel that it's my duty, my district, to bring it forward, what was in the budget and how we need to move forward. We have gotten the bids. I believe that at this point, it is, it's a depressing sight to see this empty hole in the ground. It's also, I feel, a health hazard. Would I love to see this operational and thriving in our district, yes, I absolutely would, but it's almost a death of a dream for me. So that's what I have on the agenda. I would be looking for a motion or discussion from the board as how you would like to move forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It is, with all due respect, it's your agenda item. If you're ready to make the motion, then I'm sure there will be a second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and fill this pool. We have $32,000 in the budget and the total cost of this would be $24,620. So I'd make a motion on O1 to go ahead and approve to fill this pool.
I'll second.
Is there any, we have a motion and a second, is there any public comment?
As you all know, I am here on behalf of both Beverly Hills Civic Association.
I need your names.
Harvey Gerber, President, Beverly Hills Civic Association, President, Nature Coast Affordable Housing Corp. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Miss Diana Finnegan, but I want to acknowledge that I appreciate her support today and I have not had the privilege of meeting Miss Holly Davis. And I have not had the privilege of meeting Miss Holly Davis. And I want to acknowledge your support, but I did participate in your blog at the very end. And I thought that was very well done. And I've agreed with most of the, almost all the positions you've taken. On this swimming pool, there is a categorical difference between spending twenty-four thousand dollars to kill the dreams of the kids at the Boys and Girls Club, which is what you will do. Travis Anderson is Executive Director. I spoke with him yesterday. He said he was too busy to come in today. But what he told me is, the kids go four times a month to bicentennial because that's all his million-dollar-a-year grant will allow. He's the best executive director that you've had, in my opinion, at the Boys and Girls Club. He went to Florida State. He's an athlete. He has a beautiful wife. He has kids in the school system. He's a Republican. He fits right in here. And he brought in five million dollars when he came. So he is your best, and he is gonna be getting a grant again. But next year, he doesn't have one. So what he does have is Nature Coast Affordable Housing Corp. As I told you, I personally raised the money and built the building that they're operating in at nine oh one West Roosevelt Boulevard in Beverly Hills. Now you've heard, those kids aren't swimming. We, Nature Coast Affordable Housing Corp, you have heard already, have Andrew Chagnon, who is the next generation. I'm seventy-four, he's thirty-four. His wife worked for Citrus County Housing Services. He, she was your employee. She's a top-quality later lady. And he came to me a year ago and said, I wanna do what you have done. I wanna use my skills to help the Boys and Girls Club. And he is a very skilled home builder and roofer, and that's what he does. The next two houses will be in Beverly Hills. We haven't built there before. We've owned the lots on Muscadine and three oh eight South Tyler for six, seven years. Now it's time to bring them over. Those are both quality neighborhoods. Muscadine is a half-acre lot. Every house we've built has been on a quarter acre. These houses will raise a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars each. How do we know that? And how do we know what that means? What that means is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Viability is having long-term ability to take care of this pool.
Mr. Gerber, did you have a letter on file? Is, is this, no. Okay, thank you.
You're not gonna let me speak again? Please, at least after the meeting, three of you, please let me speak.
One more opportunity for you to finish, but-
Okay, fine. If there's another opportunity, very good. I'll be back.
We wanna hear from you.
Thank you.
But maybe don't repeat what you just said so that you can finish all that you need to tell us.
I will do my best.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public discussion on the Beverly Hills pool? Is there anybody here to support the pool? Okay, that being said, I'm gonna close the public comment on O one. Any further board discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, my mind is not absolutely made up, but I am inclined to, this kills me, not support your action. Here's what I would want. It, it's the tabling for a short while. What I applaud, absolutely a hundred percent applaud, is getting this dealt with now. Hundred percent applaud that, and I'm on board with that. If we are putting, if we can table this for one month or six weeks, either two or three meetings from now, however long that it takes, as long as it's within six weeks, to get this tied up in a shiny package with a bow on top. And you may wanna take notes, cuz I'll tell you what I wanna see in there. The backstory, for those who are not aware, we do have some new staff here and whatnot. The backstory on this is that this was a community pool. It was not able to be maintained at some point, and so it became a county park. We have a big facility in Crystal River, and then there's Whispering Pines in Inverness. So we don't really have, it's not in the cards for us to have a very tiny community pool. Once the county is involved, and somebody needs to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but as far as I understand, if the county owns it and maintains it, we have to supply lifeguards, I believe. Once it's a community pool, you guys can do swim at your own risk. So theoretically. I maybe, if I'm misspeaking on anything, I apologize. The legal future as a park needs to remain, even if it is transferred ownership back. I need to have lifeguards and maintenance, ongoing cost addressed, that those are not gonna come back on us. I've been told it's not reparable, so detailed plans as to making it larger or fixing it, whatever. And progress track- checks to make sure that this is actually proceeding. At the end of all this, then I would be willing to, as a vote, to transfer this to ownership of Beverly Hills Association or whatnot. But trust me, my patience is out. I completely agree with, I believe, Commissioner Cannard and Commissioner Schlebaugh. We're tired of this. This needs to get handled, one way or the other. So that's what my thoughts are right now. Um, and again, my mind's not made up, but that's where my thoughts are right now, Chair.
Thank you. You done?
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Um, I'm a little confused by a lot of this. I saw you walk up with plans. I think there were plans here at one point. I never looked at them, and they were gone. Um, I didn't receive any packet. So I was thinking when Mr. Gerber came up that maybe, I thought, well, maybe someone will just delay this. But Madam Chair, I'm, I'm really gonna have to defer to you. I know you spent two years speaking to the public, fighting for money. You, um, I don't, I was at the meetings. I don't remember the cost. You'll know the cost, the problems. You know, this is shy of twenty-five thousand dollars. If Mr. Gerber had come up here and said anything about a pool, stop, I'm gonna save you this money. I have money. I have a whole plan of how to buy it, fix it, keep the county out of it, save the county money. I don't know about the Boys and Girls Club, if the pool can only hold forty-eight. I, I don't know how many kids they need, but I didn't hear anything about a pool. So, um, I feel like if you wanna carry through your motion, I'll support it. If you wanna delay it because in all your wisdom and talking to everyone, you, you see maybe another option, I'll, I'll support you in that too.
Thank you.
I think you've been working hard on this, and I'll get behind what you wanna do.
Thank you. Commissioner Cannard?
Well, I'm, uh, uh, let me address a couple things first. That this was a community pool at one time, and the community didn't support it. Then it was a county pool, and the community still didn't support it. The Central Ridge area has a beautiful pool at the YMCA with a mountain of programs there, uh, that has been tremendously supported by the entire community. So, I am inclined to naturally seconding it. Uh, I've seen a handful of plans on what's gonna happen with this pool come and go o- over the last few years, and they all go. So I, uh, I have not been out there speaking to the public as, um, a- as you have. Uh, certainly, i- if you're inclined to, to delay it, I'm fine with that. But otherwise, I'm ready to support this and, uh, put this to bed. You know, there was discussion earlier about, uh, you know, getting people together, and they get out there and get their vitamin D and, you know, their, their social wellness and all that. You can do that with pickleball courts too. You can, you can check both of those boxes. Uh, you can do that with picnics. You can do that with family gatherings out there, going for a walk in the park, things like that. And, um, um, expanding, uh, the area for those activities where a hole in the ground currently sits, uh, would certainly accommodate far more than the forty-eight people. So that would be my argument for it. Not gonna, as I've said too many times, die on this hill. If we want, if we wanna kick this can down the road another four to six weeks, I don't think this, this plan goes anywhere. Uh, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing that.
Commissioner Bayes?
Well, this goes back to two thousand and eleven when, uh, the county took over the park area because it was not sustainable. In twenty fifteen, the county invested eighty-two, over eighty-two thousand dollars into the Community Ridge Park Pool and Surrounding Deck Area. Uh, they then reopened the pool, May through September. There is no heat pump installed. It only accommodates forty-eight patrons at a time. Um, we've replaced multiple heat pumps because there's a flow system in the bottom of the pool that doesn't work. We have an engineer's report that tells us it's not worth repairing. It needs to be completely redone. We operated it at a deficit of seventeen thousand dollars because we had a hundred and eighteen senior passes, thirty-four individual passes, and twenty-two family passes. So it wasn't supported by the community when we did have it open. It ran in the deficit. I hear every day out in the public and at this dais that pickleball, people are wanting those. Um, so I'm gonna support the motion. I think it's, uh, long past due. Um, and I don't think that this is the place. You know, the Boys and Girls Club is a little offset from this particular location. I think and this pool, in my opinion, is not repairable. We have the backup that supports that and documents that. It would need to be rebuilt. And I, regardless of what, if, even if we went down that path and we said, here, take it over, it would still have to be operated at health, the health department standards, and we would still have to have certain requirements, um, for staffing. And I just don't, I, I've, no one has ever demonstrated a financial plan that supports that. And if that's what they wanted, I think that they've had a lot of time to put that in place and bring it forward. So I think it's time that we move forward and fill it in and make some pickleball courts and make some other in, um, investments and have more of a master plan on what we're gonna do with this park going forward.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Yes?
Point of clarification, um, and this goes back to Commissioner Cannard saying that we really need backup by Friday. Any additional backup by Friday morning. So, point of clarification, when I said that I was open to tabling it, that was under the understanding that it would no longer be owned by the county. That we would actually transfer ownership to, back to the original group that owned it, or some other group that's Beverly Hills, um, association of some sort. So, um, but I do want to give props to Commissioner Finnegan for saying this is something that you've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into, so I'm gonna follow your lead as our chair. Because, not just because you're our chair, but because this is your district and you have definitely put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanna say a few things. Nobody has fought harder on these two boards than I have to open that pool. I have met with you, Harvey. I supported your plan by the Boys and Girls Club. I thought that was a brilliant plan. I would still support that. But this is county property. This cannot be turned over to a private group that is for profit or not-for-profit or whatever. And I haven't gotten one email from the Boys and Girls Club in the state of Florida, nationally, that they are behind this pool project. And I feel like I'm disappointed because evidently you had a meeting and you didn't invite me to it.
What meeting?
And you can come in, open to the public. You had a meeting. It was in the paper. It was sent to me the night of the, the night of the meeting, an hour after the meeting had already started. I was then invited to that. I would have been there. I, I feel that that community deserves a pool. I, I still believe that. But this pool does not work for that community. So, I, I'm disappointed that the first time this is coming before me now is way too late for me to even digest the material. Again, I thought you had a great plan by the Boys and Girls Club. And that money might be better served because you could do a pool properly. And I would help you to try to figure out how to do that. But this pool and this dredging it up, and, and like Commissioner Bayes said, this is a, this is, um, this is trying to put not life into something that there is no life there. And if we could open it up to a, a, a nice, um, event pavilion, open, get life back into those two parks, and then I'm gonna still go to the governor and ask for more money. I'm gonna ask for even, you know, maybe more than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I don't wanna discourage you on the pool, but I feel like it's also, you've been a little, um, I, I don't understand why you haven't come to me. We've talked several times in the first year, the first months I was in office, and I thought you had great plans. But you haven't contacted me since, so I don't understand what is going on or what the agenda is. But we need to move forward on this. This pool will not work. This community, the, the Boys and Girls Club are going to Whispering Pine. As far as I know, they're fine with that right now. Would they be fine with it next door to them? Yes. But there, you're not gonna have a bunch of kids in the summertime, sitting, waiting for somebody to get out of the pool so they can get, jump in. It just doesn't work. And I, it pains me to bring this forward, but we have to. It's time to put this to bed. So I'm gonna keep my motion on the floor. I have a second. We've opened it up to public comment. We've talked about this and talk, I'm tired of government and talking and talking and talking. It's time to do something. So this might be a death of my dream, but my, there might be another opportunity for a better dream. And I will, I would love to work with you on that. So, that being said, is there any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second. Board, all in favor of G, O one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Thank you.
Thought you said you're gonna give me another top two to speak.
You, you will. You will have another opportunity. Uh, P, commis-, uh, Madam Attorney, do you have anything?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Gerber, it's open to the public.
This, my pastor. These are the blueprints from an engineer that we hired back in two thousand seventeen. The "we" is the Keep the Pool Open Committee. That was when the B O C C owned it and was being asked to pay for it. Today, I am offering and showing you that I have the money to fix the pool. I'll have it February twenty-third this morning. Uh, the judge signed the order. You have it in this room. The fact that you don't have time to read it means you just should adjourn and at least read it. I do wanna build a swimming pool down there if this doesn't go through. Let me tell you my hesitation. That's gonna take about five hundred thousand dollars. That's a great deal of money. I'm not sure how long I can prove to you at your satisfaction that I have five hundred thousand dollars. Backyard pools, hundred thousand dollars. Two people I know, Scott Lundie, Andrew Chagnon, they're spending eighty-five, ninety-five thousand dollars. The cost of swimming pools is phenomenal. This pool, I know because I've been there with Francine Nobles and with Will Bryant four or five times in years gone by. Even you were there, Commissioner. And we know, it all has to be fixed. It'll have a brand-new package treatment plant. Several years ago, that was twenty-five thousand dollars. A package treatment plant will have a chlorinator, and it will have a filter, and it will have the state-of-the-art requirements that this engineer will tell us apply today. This is from seventeen. This is now twenty-three. We are not fools. I have been building houses for forty-five years up north. I've been here twenty-five years. My daughters went to Kano High School. One of them's a Harvard lawyer, the public defender in another state. The other's a, an account, a, um, veterinarian. That's irrelevant. But the point is, I am here. Now, when you were, uh, running for commission, you told me over at the Boys and Girls Club, yes, this is what I'd like to do. And I said, I'd like to do it too. Five hundred thousand dollars. That's the problem. Then I came to your office when you just got elected, and I had, the people were here earlier, John and Laurie, I mean, Bonnie and myself, and you. And you took us outside and you said, I wanna put a fountain on top of the pool. And we walked away and we said, well, we don't want a fountain on top of the pool. We want the pool itself to work again. Now I'm bringing it to you. I am gonna pay for it. And if you just read your package- I am gonna pay for it, and if you just read your package, I'll show you how. I've just given you exactly the judge's order, signed this morning by Judge Faudy. I had to spend two hours with this young lady in this building getting a copy of that order, 'cause first she forgot the date on it, and then they couldn't find it, and finally they found it, took two hours. Now you say, what have I been doing? Ask Doug when I called him, the day before it was on the agenda, 'cause I had heard a rumor, and I wouldn't tell anybody where I heard it, 'cause it was a leak, and I don't wanna get somebody in trouble with a leak, but she said, I don't want you to be blindsided. I called the next day, he's got a log on his phone, and I got a log on mine, and it says when I called. And from that time on, when this young lady was back, 'cause she's got five kids and grandkids, she's a young lady, but she's had five kids and she's got grandkids, so that's what she does with her weekend. She doesn't work for me, she doesn't do anything. Right now, she's working for me. She's getting paid fifteen dollars an hour for being here. She's been here how long? Since nineteen-seventy, Heather. She, they've owned their own house, she and her life partner. For how many years? Many years? Over, almost thirty years. I'm not bringing you people who you don't know. George Usos is chairman of my board. You all know who he is. He's my best friend in, in Citrus County. Eric Abel was on the board, and he resigned because he had to take over hi- his business with his wife. Mark Casper is now on my board. Most of you should know, he's Steve Tamposi's man, and Fred Clark was executive director in the year two thousand of the Boys and Girls Club. So we now have two more houses coming, and they're gonna make a hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars each, and I can prove it to you only by the house that we just sold. That was, was the exact same house. The next two are in Beverly Hills on Muscadine, and so we ask for you to adjourn, table this, and let us do our work, 'cause I don't know that I'll have five-hundred thousand, but I surely know I have ten years' operating expenses with a license builder whose heart is in helping the kids, and I hope your hearts are in helping the kids. The kids will be there in the afternoon because they don't care. They jump in and they swim. They come over on a minibus. They can walk over, Commissioner Baye, they can walk right down the path. That would be better for them health-wise. There's a path right from the Boys and Girls Club, you walk through the park and down that path right to where this, this swimming pool is, and I would encourage them to do that, but I don't get involved in their business.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna take, um, I'm gonna go out of order for just a moment, and please excuse me. You're talking about this pool, it's a county property and the money you have. Are you saying you were gonna give that money to the county to do the pool? Are you wanting that piece of property in your own business?
No, I think that what has been said is that I am a home builder and a contractor, and I will hire the contractors, and you can see who I will hire. When I build my houses, it's all local contractors, nobody from out of Citrus County, and those same people will be involved here. Be Todd Workman, if I needed air conditioning, it would be Air Care, it's electric, it's S and S Electric.
So you're saying you would give that money to the county to fix the pool?
No ma'am, I wanna fix it myself, because I'm, because I can get it done.
But who would own the pool?
Nature Coast Foreplay Housing Corp.
Okay, there's the rub. That's the problem. We answer to a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand people, and I have had a tremendous amount of citizens that say, listen, you don't support my community pool.
You're, excuse me, you're not supporting, you're, you're selling it to me for any reasonable price. You're selling it to me, and then I'm gonna fix it and make it viable for the kids at the Boys and Girls Club and the older people in Beverly Hills who pay ten dollars and they can come use it.
Why didn't you, why didn't you contact me so I could have put that on the agenda? Why are you coming in the eleventh and a half hour?
It's not the eleventh hour. You've blindsided me, Commissioner. I had no idea this was coming up.
This was approved October, sir.
Not by me, I don't come to your meetings.
The board approved this, that it was to be filled.
That's fine, you can, it wasn't because we had heard at the, at the MSBU meeting. I'm sure you're correct.
I, I, I understand, I think that, I think that, I'm sorry, this, this is done, and I would have, you know, preferred it, but thank you. Well, we have to move on. Thank you. Okay.
That's a shame.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak and open to the public at this time? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
I'm not speaking on pool.
Okay, you're, no problem. I just need your name, you have to give that to the, here, give it to Doug here, right here. Thank you, sir.
Been a while since I've been here, Chester Bradshaw, I'm an environmentalist, working throughout the watershed. What I've asked him to hand out to you is a petition. It came before this commission board back in September twenty-seven, twenty-eleven, about emergency repair of a tieback levee up here in northeastern Citrus County on the Hernando Lake, directly close to the flood control structure, if that's what you wanna refer to it as. It seems that DEP issued a permit to go ahead and build it. It was going to an administrative hearing. Technicality stopped the administrative hearing, and a lot of people was quietly sitting there grinning, says, we've made some horrible mistakes here, let the administrative department break it all down and it'll go away. It did not. Consequently, within your hand there, second page there, the letter from DEP says that this thing has been, what you say, renewed, reviewed twice, and it's now expired again in two thousand twenty. Board members, we don't really wanna go down and file for another administrative hearing on something like this. What we need to do is have a public workshop, because you'd already voiced your opinion and wrote a letter to DEP asking for a full review on it. It wasn't done because, as it says, technically, half the office of DEP had already approved it, and quietly was hoping that administrative hearing would stop the whole thing. It did not. It's still floating. Twelve years later, we're still faced with a situation that if the trees was to fall and tear a hole in this thing, it would definitely lower the Hernando Lake, and there would be a substantial amount of water going downstream into the river. We have a problem. What I've asked for you to do is look at the papers you've got. You've got two maps in your hand. The first one there, the dark green one, was made in nineteen fifty-one. There was no outfall canal, there was no dikes in the middle of the lake, there was no Wyson Dam, and there wasn't, what you'd say, dikes in the Flying Eagle property to the south. It was a working system, but people began to fool with it in all directions, and that's how you come across this Salapaka Water Conservation Control Authority founded here in Citrus County to build a dam to try to survive the water situations they were faced with, too high or too low. This thing only gets worse with what they're trying to do here. I'm urging you to take a look at it, give it some thought, and above all, let's look at having a public workshop so it will bring all the stakeholders, perhaps the citizens for sure, but you definitely need to get all the state and federal agencies back together to see what you're doing and why you're doing it. One of the biggest things that's missing off of it, and a lot of people didn't understand, is the dark green map that you see in your hands over in the side of the river down here. There was, and still is, part of an original dam built by Hernando County back in eighteen-eighty-three. That's what was holding the lake up. It's gone now, it's torn up, the whole system's drained, and about the only way we're gonna do it is look at a comprehensive study of the entire lake system, and let's put this thing together right. By the way, the landowner is completely ready to go. The technicality was, a public road was closed, only three hundred foot, has caused all this uproar and more than two-hundred thousand dollars in paperwork, and we've done nothing. So this can be cured, but we gotta work together to solve it, not leave it in the limbo that it is now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time, our final open to the public? Seeing none, commissioners? Any comments about what we've just heard?
I feel like two thousand eleven is the ghost of Christmas past.
Um, what I would like to say is, I, you know, I love a public workshop. If this is something the board would like to entertain, you know, I would, I would like to, to bring this back, is, does anybody have any objection, or you wanna digest this a little bit?
Madam Chair, I would like staff to give us some direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I agree.
But I love a public workshop. So if staff could give us direction on what we need to do and where we need to go and who we need to talk to, I, I would, uh, I personally implore that. Is there any, can we get a consensus on that?
For staff to look at it?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's a good idea. Okay, very good.
Take a look at it and get back.
And thank you, sir, I will read this, I know we all will. Okay, so now I, I'm just gonna announce our regular meetings, we're getting, tying up this meeting. Um, we have a regular meeting February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at one PM here at the Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred. We have a February twenty-eighth meeting, two thousand twenty-three, at one PM here at Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred, right where we are, and March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at one PM, in this room. We have upcoming workshops and special meetings on January twenty-fifth, which is tomorrow. This is the B O C Strategic Planning Retreat, where the commissioners will give their, um, input, priorities, initiatives. Uh, this is a public, um, workshop, but there will be no public comment during the retreat. You can come and comment on February seventh. And, um, we have, we will not be adjourning this meeting because we have a five-oh-one, so I'm going to call a recess, so thank you. We will be back at five-oh-one.
County Chamber of Commerce. Um, I would like to speak in favor of this application. Um, I've known one of the principals, Sean, for many, many years, even since he was a kid. He invited me down to look at it. This is old Florida regentrified. These are, this is an existing building with existing cabins, and I would hope, and I think that y'all have demonstrated this is what you're looking for, to take an existing property, bring it back to its highest and best use, preserve what's special about the Nature Coast. This does all of those things. You're talking about a very minor footprint in this community, a mom-and-pop restaurant, twenty-four hundred square feet, uh, but when I walked in, it reminded me of the, you know, the old Green Tavern and some of the old places that have gone away. Um, so I hope you'll approve it. Um, the, these are kinds of people, local people, that are investing in our community. And he told me what the county asked him to do, and, um, unlike a lot of people that gripe, he just, he, as Mr. Stillwell said, he's agreed to do everything that the county's asked him to do to improve the area, so he's a good partner, and this is a good project.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this project? Going once? Going twice? Okay, at this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this project? Anyone?
Yeah, I, I would, because in my letter, I know we got three minutes, but I'm Stephen Schwartz.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Uh, I don't live in any, any of these affected areas, uh, but this has to do with all of the building that's going on and incorporated of, of other people trying to come before you or coming before you for changes. I don't live, as I said, in these affected areas. The future of Citrus County is in your hands, as it says on my shirt. I come from the heart with love, peace, and harmony, and I want our environment to remain that way for our future residents. We can't stop growth and traffic, but can manage it, especially with the Sun Coast and most probably the Turnpike Extension. We can't change what has already happened and its effects on nature, the Nature Coast already. We can, in the presence, slow down the progress by protecting the peace and serenity of all the residents of the whole county by implementing the following on this housing development and other issues, a minimum, particularly here in the housing, a minimum of a quarter of an acre and no zero lot lines. A percentage of trees already there remain, so wildlife has some familiar habitat, and in areas that no, had no trees, we plant some. A buffer zone of a hundred feet minimum around the entire perimeter, a wall made of concrete ten feet high and ten to twelve inches thick that is painted with a guarantee it will maintain, be maintained on both sides to prevent the transient of people and animals back and forth. A vinyl fence wall will not accomplish that, as it's already been tried on four-eighty-six, as well as past areas. The future of the Nature Coast depends on the balance. I would hope and pray that rezone, the rezoning of any new areas stop. Our ecosystem is very fragile. It is, i- if it is not, if, if, if the, if it is not, that will suffer. Our children is the ones that will suffer. If you love them, then well, then a well-planned development, the future plans is necessary, and how you finalize these projects will tell your legacy. Thank you for allowing me to reiterate what I spoke this afternoon. Thank you for the dedicated service and compassion, and I'm sorry some of it was muffled because I was rushing to get through in the three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone? Going once? Going twice? Okay, at this time, we're gonna close the public portion. The applicant has a chance for rebuttal.
No, thank you, ma'am.
No, very good. Okay, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve T-one, with the, um, exceptions as the, um, staff has recommended, and I'd like to congratulate this young man. This is exactly, I think, it, it, he's only making an improvement to a footprint that already exists. Um, we talked so many times about having our kids come back home. This young man has gone out, um, made some money, came back and turned his money into an investment into Citrus County, and I applaud you for doing that, so thank you very much for coming home.
I'll second. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve CPA dash AA dash PUD dash two-two dash seventeen with the twelve conditions.
Based on confidence.
Based on competency.
Based on competent and substantial evidence. Sorry.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Baye, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any additional public comment on this? No. Well, it says it right here. Okay, board, um, any other discussion?
Um, I would also say thank you for coming home and investing in the community. It's exactly what we're looking for, and, um, Mr. Schwartz, I did actually read your letter thoroughly on our short break, um, the, and you're not allowed to reply to me, so just listen. The portion that you talked about in Pine Ridge, you need to lodge a complaint with code compliance, okay? It's gonna die on my desk, just call code.
Thank you. And I would like to say, I appreciate, I don't, I'll just look at Clark, I appreciate the fact that you are staying true to the original footprint. Um, as you know, I think forty-seven percent of our county is protected. We, we are diligently protecting, we will only be able to develop so much. Um, I didn't realize what a tree hugger I was until I got into this office, and seeing something like this being repurposed with the same footprint, I, I'm gonna, I love that every day, all day long, and I appreciate the re, you know, investment into our community, and, um, I applaud you for it and thank you. I don't know who is the applicant because I only, okay, way to go. And so at that ti- at this time, we've had public comment, we have a motion, we have a second. So board, all in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations, it passes five-zero. Chair? Yes. Can I just get clarification? Is it twelve conditions, all twelve conditions? 'Cause you said the condens- conditions mentioned, but they didn't say how many.
I thought I said twelve.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to T-two, CPA slash AA slash PUD dash twenty-two dash eighteen. Madam Attorney.
And with regard to that app-
And with regard to that application, have you had any ex parte communications you need to disclose for the record? And we'll sh- start with Commissioner Kennard.
No.
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 Thank you. At the conclusion of this hearing, commissioners, you're gonna be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, many of the Citrus County Land Use Atlas Map by redesignating approximately fifty-five point oh-three acres from the general commercial district with a planned unit development and the per-
and the per, excuse me, professional services office with a planned unit development to the general commercial district with an amended planned unit development, the professional services office district with an amended planned unit development, and the high-density residential district with a planned unit development for non-residential and multifamily uses, providing for conflicts, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And also, you are asked to be consider, asked to consider comprehensive plan amendment ordinance and ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Future Land Use Map by redesignating approximately 15.52 acres from the general commercial district and professional services office district to the high-density residential district, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And I believe that Mr. Pigeon is here for the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the record. My professional address is Pigeon Robertson Associates, Pigeon Adora and Associates, 925 Southeast 17th Street in Ocala, Florida. My name is Chuck Pigeon, professional engineer in the state of Florida. Thank you. I've got a short presentation. Staff is gonna go into a lot more detail about the current approvals for the GNC zoning and the PSO zoning, and then what we're currently doing. But in a nutshell, we're taking 55 acres, we're taking about 15 acres of that. We'd like to have 300 apartments. The rest of it stays as a general commercial, and we've rearranged things to, in my opinion, a much better engineered system, much better for the county, much better for that corridor and that commercial node. So with that, we have a presentation. Staff will go into this again, but basically, the location of this is the northwest corner of West North, North O'Brian Highway and the Canto Highway. It's behind and west of the Target Store that you just approved recently with the Ferber Corporation. So this 55 acres is nested between basically the YMCA and the Clear Sky Rehealed Foundation Hospital that's currently under construction, and it's south of Black Diamond, and said west of the Walmart that's on the south side of the road. So it's kind of fills in that gap. Next slide, please. This is the overall conceptual master plan. It shows 15 acres. It also shows the commercial along the frontage on County Road, the West Novo Brian Highway. And a couple key things I'd like to point out as far as what this is, is 300 apartments, which creates a community apartment facility, a neighborhood within the GNC area, maximum around 630,000 square feet. If we could ever get to that, that would be a hallelujah day. Realistically, it won't get to that, but we don't know what may be a one-story or two-story. We don't know what exactly gonna be there to complete all of it, but we wanna have enough flexibility. And this is consistent with what was already approved currently. We have shared internal access drives, county water and sewer facilities. We'll have a complete stormwater management facility, which will be integrated with the adjacent properties, as opposed to each and everyone having their own little thing, and it's not gonna look like a bunch of little bomb craters everywhere. We're gonna have an integrated engineered system throughout that area. There'll be pedestrian access and connectivity throughout the commercial and the apartment complex, the adjacent hospital zones all the way over to the YMCA. And then there's a lot of landscape and buffering. So I'd like to kind of zoom in a little bit more on the apartment complex area, if I can. So in this apartment area, this is sort of a blow up of that. We're looking at clubhouse facilities, maintenance facilities, and the things to keep as a closed community. Mentioned the stor, shared stormwater management areas. The units themselves would be anywhere from 24 apartments up to about 36 apartments. These are three-story walk-up units, and looking for the kind of a working-class process of affordability, completely landscaped. I'm gonna tell you about that in a minute. We'd like to have pocket parks within the center, and there'll be, again, shared access with sidewalks and other amenities and facilities there to make it this a really nice little apartment complex that's contained within itself, within walking distance of commercial, medical, recreation, and so on. So the next slide is a rendering of the apartment itself. This is the larger 36-type unit building, landscape with 50% landscaping in the front, in addition to the landscaping that's throughout the apartment complex. And as you can see, it's a three-story walk-up unit. So there are one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, and three-bedroom units. So, and then there's two-bedroom units with a den. So there's a mixture to try to help fit the demographics of who may wanna live here, and hopefully there'll be a lot of good employment in the area that continue to fill these, but we can also help the businesses with a place for folks to live and stay. And hopefully the neighboring communities see this as well, as a transition housing from the larger single-family homes into something that is more appropriate as all of us continue to age in our Citrus County life. Again, within that community, the pocket parks, the paved sidewalks and driveways, and amenities. The next one is gonna address just some of the landscape and buffering, because we wanted to make sure this was compatible with not only the residential to the north, but the commercial to the east and west, and also the planned commercial between County Road 46 and this site. So with that, I'll just kind of start. There's a complete perimeter buffer, and we were looking to have at least a 15-foot wide buffer along any roadway, which includes the internal roadway, and that would be landscaped to, to basically help hide the commercial from the apartment complex and vice versa. Along the north boundary, we talked in length about this with the zoning commission, but on the north boundary, proposing to have a planned buffer adjacent to the PUD that is planned, and you'll hear about this next, but currently this medium-density residential to the north. And we would look to have a 10-foot planned landscape buffer on the side where the apartments are, even though the current Land Development Code only requires a five-foot buffer, we'd look to have a 10. And it actually, it only requires a five-foot grass strip of land. So we've gone from a grass strip of land to a 10-foot planned buffer. The buildings would set back a minimum 25 feet, so there's actually gonna be some additional landscaping there, but we can't commit because we don't know where air-conditioning units may go, or where someone may have, you know, a walkway to get to the back of their unit. So 10-foot on the side, which will combine together to make a 25-foot. On this slide is a little indication of oak tree type buffer, which we would be a, what we'd call a modified type B buffer, which would be four trees per 100 feet, continuous landscape hedge. So we're giving you an idea of magnolia trees and oak trees. One thing that's not really intended for this is to have a palm tree community. This is not fitting Citrus County in the central core, so we can kind of scratch that one off the list. So we're looking at magnolias, oak trees, those type of larger canopy-type trees that fit the area. In addition to that, we'll have landscaping in the parks, landscaping in the entrances. The next slide kind of addresses landscaping for the entire 55 acres. Once again, it'd be complete buffering around the entire general commercial GNC zoning. We're proposing a 25-foot buffer along West Novo Brian Highway. Once again, the magnolia oak, that theme that's so prevalent in the center of the county. Just wanna point out a couple things there as well. The roadways, internal roadways would at least have a minimum five-foot buffer between parking and the right-of-way. We're proposing a 65% impervious area for the apartment complex, which is very reasonable, and then a 36% floor area ratio, which is consistent with what's already approved for that zoning area. The next slide, this is just to address a little bit about the site access and traffic operations. The really good planning that was done by the county and all the predecessors before us as far as multiple access points spaced according to DOT Traffic Ops, provides two very convenient and very well-placed access points on the ends of the 55 acres and then one in the middle. So there's three access points for this entire, which is a little more than a half a mile stretch. So very reasonable access management, internal pedestrian walkways, again, right-of-ways with limited access points. These are full median openings already planned. It's already a four-lane road, it's, you know, planned for future growth. The next slide, we're gonna talk a little bit about signage, and then I will end with really just some information about signage, because it's the one thing I want the Board to understand, so that it will help the actual overall commercial development. There's actually four types of signs that could go on the property. We have a pylon sign, which is the largest sign. We're proposing two of those, one at each of the major intersections, and each pylon sign could be shared with the folks that would be using in the back and the front. There's a standalone sign, it's a freestanding tenant-type sign, and that would only be used 25-foot high or less if it's behind landscaping, where you really can't necessarily see it, because it's behind the landscaping, it's gotta be higher. Then there's two other type pylon signs. There's a single-tenant pylon sign, and then there's a pylon sign which is shared tenants. And that's important, because we've talked with staff about having a shared signage for the smaller commercial parcels, one acre or less in size. So we have a shared pylon sign, and then we have a standalone, which would be something like your larger restaurant tenants. They pretty much insist on having their own sign. They don't wanna share. So the next slide just gives you some examples, and one of the things we're requesting and proposing is that we comply with the Land Development Code as far as signage, signage spacing, signage appearance, but we do need to look at where the signs can be placed in that 25-foot buffer along West Novo Brian Highway. We've got lots of examples of signs that are behind the 25 feet, and that, just as a safety issue, and a safety concern for me as a professional engineer. We propose to have smaller, limited monument signs within the first 10 feet of the right-of-way, and then the back 15 feet remains landscaping and trees and bushes and shrubs and whatnot. So this slide just gives you an indication of what we're really proposing to talk about, is this is a landscape buffering, but the small sign is closer to the road, so motorists don't have to kind of look and try to find their way and look between hedges and shrubs and trees to try to find where they're going when they're driving County Road 46. This slide in the corner there, it's, this is a 15-foot wide buffer, we're proposing 25. But as, as you get further away from the sign, you're seeing landscape buffer. You can't see the sign, but motorists could, in fact, find where they're going. The next slide, please. And these are just more examples. A lot of these examples come from the Villages area or come from the East Coast over in the Daytona area and whatnot, where we found some very modern construction. We felt that it was appropriate to show landscaping and the different signage, and how the signs kind of tuck themselves in and make it more, more safe for everyone driving. So a couple more examples. And then the last one, again, is just another example of some signage. With the proposed rendering of how it would go, from the right-of-way would be a two-foot setback from the monument sign, the landscaping behind that, proposed six trees for every 100 feet, and that's a lot of trees. If you're not putting in palm trees, six trees is a lot of trees. It would look, they would cramp each out. Most of the time, when you go to larger oak trees and stuff, it's four per 100 feet. But staff and the, I've reviewed this, and the code says six trees per 100. So we would look to accomplish that. Have to use some smaller trees. As you know, also along 46 on that front side, north side, there's the big power line, it's the transmission power line. So they do have very big poles all the way down through there, so we have to have some flexibility as to where the sign can actually go, so you're not trying to look around the power pole to see the sign. The poles, we know, are a much more visual nuisance than the sign. So we do ask for product flexibility. And then, I think the last one is just one more example of a sign, just to show the actual site triangle and some other examples of pros and cons. The two bottom photos there, one is the signs behind landscaping, and you can't see the signs. This is actually State Road 200. If you drive State Road 200 and you try to find your way, you get caught in this dilemma where you're driving down a major highway, and you're trying to find where you're going. Your Google map showed you it's supposed to be here, but you're looking, and you cannot find it because the sign is hidden. So you start looking for buildings, and that's not a good, not a good thing to do. You need to help the motorists find where they're going. So I do ask that you approve this zoning request, and there's three parts to it, but there are 15 conditions, and we would ask for some slight modification of the conditions. I don't know if you wanna hear staff's presentation first, and then we can go over some condition language, some minor changes, or should I present that now? And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I only saw 14 conditions.
14, and we've requested to add, add one more.
So. Why don't you wanna, why don't you tell?
What's the one additional condition that you'd like?
Well, I have 15 conditions, and Condition 11 addressed the signage.
Right.
Condition 15 was, and it was in the handout in the package, Condition 15 was that each parking island within the HDR zone be allowed and acceptable to have a 200 square foot in size, but that the combined parcels of landscaping would be 400 square feet.
Okay, that wasn't considered by the planning board, so I don't really have anything to present to you on that particular condition. I do wanna clarify, if I could, your slide said 630,000, and staff report in the draft ordinance says 620. I was trying frantically to look back. I think it came from your traffic study. Can you check on that square footage for the commercial, whether it's 620,000 or 630,000 that you're asking for? Because we have a difference there. Your slide said 630, but 620 was the staff report, and 620 is the ordinance. But I think that came from your traffic study, and I just couldn't find it quickly while you were speaking.
When you say 620 is the ordinance, or I see it's written 620. I think that's correct.
Okay, your slide said 630. I just didn't wanna mess you up on that.
We calculated 630, 620 is, okay.
All right, still wanna mess you up. And what page was that in the packet, the 630?
The six, it was his slide presentation, the PowerPoint, so.
It's in the slide presentation in the original applicant.
I have a page number on it.
It's in the middle.
Okay, I'll find it.
No, it's all right. It was page, what I have is eight, 654 of 840?
654, okay, thank you. Board, is there any questions for Mr. Pigeon?
Yes, what was the, what was the 15th condition again?
15th condition, and there's a preference, what it really means, when you're doing the landscaping in the parking lots, the code says so many square feet for every 10 parking spaces. We know a typical single parking space is a 10 by 20, so roughly 200 square feet. We're requesting that we allow to use the 200 square feet. The condition states it must comply with Chapter 1740, which is additional standards for large multifamily or large residential and large commercial projects. It requires a greater percentage of landscaping. We're asking to be able to keep the 200 per individual island, but overall meet the 400 square feet for the 10 parking spaces. We're able to just shift it around as an average for the whole parking lot. We know the intent was to have enough trees and greens and landscaping, but the way the parking is laid out for the high-density residential, there are no parking spaces back-to-back to each other. They all front on some kind of green area, a park or the front of the buildings. So there's a lot of landscaping around these parking spaces. But we're trying to do our best to comply, but, but not make the islands wider, just to make them wider and lose parking spaces. It's a pretty tight site.
And it looks like that's spelled out on page 729. He has the revised conditions with the signs, and I think he wants, and then this condition. The planning board didn't consider this, but the way he's describing it and the way it's written, it's actually already allowed in the code. We have that flexibility already to be able, as long as you're doing 400 per 10 parking spaces, we can, we can do that in this area. So no significant concerns with that. But that Condition 11, I think, is his revised signage on that same page.
Right. And Condition 11, in a nutshell, would say that each side of the pylon sign would be 300 square feet. I think there was a, the way it reads is the site shall have no more than two pylon signs, each not exceeding 300 square feet in size. But would you need to clarify that it means each side of the sign? So if we could add the word "each side" not to exceed 300 square feet, that helps clarify, so there's no misunderstanding in the future. But we also ask to add, signage cannot be placed in the required buffer areas unless otherwise approved by County. But we also asked to add signage cannot be placed in the required buffer areas unless otherwise approved by county staff. Only monument signs up to eight-feet maximum height will be allowed within the buffer, and are subject to staff approval based on the location and the design concept. Adjoning fronting parcels one acre or smaller in size will be required to use a combined sign. What we're trying to do is reduce the number of signs in half. And then we further clarify that by saying frontage parcels less than one acre will be allowed to have an individual freestanding sign, or larger. So larger parcels have a freestanding sign. And what we need by freestanding sign is they could have a monument sign in the front, or if it's behind the 25 feet, it could have a little bit bigger sign, maybe on a pole. But we did want to allow a freestanding sign for larger-than-one-acre parcels. Smaller-than-one-acre parcels or one acre or less, you've got to combine them, and you've got to share with your neighbor. And we're going to reduce the number of signs. And then we talked about that the separation of the signs would be in accordance with the Land Development Code. Want to make sure that was clear. And then the shared signs, we've quantified that five signs for every 10 parcels. So we would allow it up to the five signs total. And that language is in the package.
Thank you. And I see that yours corrected that it's the 480, County Road 486, not 491 on item 11.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Board, any questions for Mr. Pigeon?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm glad you addressed signage, because that was one of my questions when you were going over the four different types earlier. I was really hoping that you weren't planning to have any freestanding sign type A allowed, but you just said that you're going to on some parcels. To me, that always looks like a little bit more downscale kind of development.
Correct. And it's the only real reasonable choice they have if they have to go behind the 25 feet, and they're trying to batter and compete with signage and compete with trees. But we don't know the tenant, most of them. All the modern design is to put them smaller and a little bit closer to the road.
Is there, are you trying to say that there are certain parcels, or some of the other restrictions on number of signs are going to force this to happen? That some signs have to be behind the buffer and will force the situation? Because I'd rather just say, no, we're not going to allow it.
Well, if, if they cannot put a sign where they can see it in front of the landscaping, then they have to build something taller behind.
I understand that, but what would cause that situation? That they would not be allowed to put something in front of the buffer?
Only if you didn't approve Condition 11 as we rewrote it.
Okay. So if we approve Condition 11 as you rewrote it, we can then strike the ability to put pole signs up?
I think we're very, very close. I can't tell you which tenant is going to be there. I don't believe any tenant wants these tall freestanding signs anymore. They just want a sign. So I'd hesitate to strike it altogether, but I think you've given us a great ability to not have those signs. And again, it's staff approval. I can't think of a condition that they would want that type of sign unless they were pretty far off the road, maybe behind the drainage retention area, and they needed a sign. They want to get a little taller because of the landscaping. That's all I can think of.
If there's one thing this job will teach you, there is no accounting for taste in the world. So I'd rather not leave that open, but I'll let my colleagues speak. Come back to that.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Questions?
Well, I'm trying to read fast as Commissioner Davis is speaking, so. I like what you're saying about some guarantee. You know, if we let you put it in front, but you can't guarantee there wouldn't be a tall sign. But if we open that up, we wouldn't have the taller sign. I just want to make sure we're not going to allow the taller sign in front of the buffer.
Correct, that's not allowed. That would not be allowed, no tall signs.
Even with Condition 11.
Even with Condition 11, unless we need to clarify that. It would only be, because we've limited to eight-foot in height, which is the monument sign maximum height. Right now, when you go up and down the road, there are eight-foot-by-twelves out there. We limit to eight-foot-high, and it would be eight-foot-wide. That's the biggest sign that could ever be there, eight by eight.
That's why I was trying to read quick. It does say only monument-style signs, okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Can I show that again?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Bayes?
Yes, yes. Is that our regulation that the monument sign can only be eight-foot tall?
No, ma'am. That's not. Monument signs are generally three feet or less. Anything larger than that is usually considered a freestanding sign, not a monument sign. It's some of the same rules.
Because I like the monument sign, and I would like to see uniformity. And I think, you know, I've looked at some other counties and where they're, everything is a monument sign, but I think it can't exceed 11 feet. And I think when you have that uniformity, everything's, you know, it gives you some consistent, consistency. So I like the idea of maybe making the monument sign a little taller than what's being proposed, but everything being a monument sign. And then, and I think we do have some regulation. I'm not exactly, I didn't look it up to see what our outdoor lighting illumination limits are.
Yes, we do. We have those. And there's no request for deviation here. I haven't done my presentation yet, but he's not requesting deviation for our outdoor lighting.
Thank you. Can I show that?
No, I'm good.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. I, I didn't look at the language that's proposed here, but in two instances in the proposed language, it's giving unbridled discretion to staff. And your staff, just like anyone else, can't make a decision that's in violation of the code. So when it says unless otherwise approved by staff, that's giving too much discretion to staff. And then at the bottom, where it says unless otherwise approved by staff, I would encourage you not to have that type of language in your approvals, because it gives unbridled discretion to staff. So we have objective criteria in your code that needs to be applied if they want to change. If you want to change that objective criteria for this particular application, I would urge you to have more definitive language than just leaving it up to staff to decide, because that causes problems down the line between the applicants and staff trying to negotiate after the fact and try to decide what y'all would have wanted.
Thank you. Mr. Pigeon, are you okay with striking unless, unless as otherwise approved by staff? It's a very valid point.
Right, and I agree. Language is put in there at the request of conversations with staff. But I agree, what we're trying to do is, where it says things like, you can't have plain signage within the required buffers. Well, we need to take out the word "within the required buffers." Because, and then that kind of, so the very last sentence, for example, says, cannot be located within the visibility triangle. I agree with that. That's, that's, or within required buffers. So there's contradicting language. We would like to put monument signs in the buffers. So we say, we could say, take, take out the unless otherwise approved by staff, and put unless it's a monument sign.
You should probably hear from staff.
Yeah. Okay, we've, I've made notes. We'll come back to that, Mr. Pigeon.
Yes, we will look at language.
Thank you. Ms. Kato.
All right, my turn.
Thank you.
All right, so this application is for approximately 55 acres. Mr. Pigeon has gone over a lot of information here. This is approximate location, which he did talk about. You are going to hear another application just to the north of this, right after this. This is a conceptual master plan, which he did go over. So I'm not, I'm going to jump in a little bit more on this particular item. So they're asking for 620,000 square feet of commercial and up to 300 apartments. This would add a high-density residential component to this application. Now, the high-density residential is not there right now. Right now, you have GNC and PSO on 46 and not high-density. High-density does allow up to 20 units an acre. That is what they're asking for in the apartments. It's about 19 and a half units per acre. So they're at their limit for the high-density area, the apartment area. This is a previous plan that was actually approved way back, I want to say 2012. It is still valid. It has not expired yet, because the applicant has requested extensions on it. Just wanted to give you a little history on this, because this is what was applied for before. There were five out parcels and a large, kind of a big box store, and then a strip, strip area. So kind of putting them together so you can see size components. These are the two plans combined. Part of this was already developed with the Clear Sky Rehab Hospital. It was supposed to be multifamily and office. Wasn't a lot of definition about what multifamily was at that point, what kind of density was proposed. But it was proposed small. That, that's already under construction. The access points, the three access points in 46 are matching up with the existing access points previously approved. They don't perfectly line up, because I couldn't get the scales to work, but they are lining up with what was, what was previously approved. However, you can see there's quite a lot more of out parcels. And that's something that the planning board did talk about quite in some detail with the signage, and I'll go over that in a second. So here's the signs. You can see what was approved on the top there. The blue are the, the blue are the monument signs, and the red are the larger pylon signs. And then what's proposed at the bottom. Now, the planning board did deliberate about this quite a bit, and they did not recommend approval of the deviation to put these in the buffers and allow signage in the buffers. Our code does not allow that. I'll remind you that these are not continuous hedge buffers or continuous tree buffers. I'm sure that'd be great if they were. He gave you some pictures. That's not what buffers look like. I'd love to have them continuous like that, but they're not. They're three trees, four trees, six trees per 100 feet. So there are definitely gaps for the signage, and you'll see that throughout the county on the newer projects that actually comply with that. They also did not want shared signage, which was suggested at the planning board meeting. Right across the street, you can see the McDonald's and the Mavis. They have a beautiful shared sign there, and you can see it very clearly, because they have a gap in their buffer. So I think they're kind of a good textbook that it can work. The planning board did not support in the buffers, or did not support the number of signs that they're asking for. There was a lot of discussion, just heard, about sign height. Our sign height is pretty generous. Freestanding signs can go up to 35 feet. Monuments generally, like I said, are usually three feet or less. There's not an eight feet, there's not an 11 feet. Those are usually considered freestanding signs. So a monument sign, to me, it's the three feet or less. But they, he did say, and he said it again here, that eight feet is what he's proposing. I think those will definitely be visible from 46. I don't think that's an issue here. But the planning board did not support all of the signs. They did want to, we combined them just to say, there's 10 out parcels, let's do five signs, and y'all share. And then have the big pylon ones on the entrance. The back areas where the apartments are, they're also, those were actually changed from pylon to monument on the brand-new, the brand-new site plan. I did not get a chance to change these red stars to blue. But they, generally, for multifamily and for subdivisions, we have subdivision ID signs. They are very low to the ground. They are 35 feet, square feet or less, and they can comply with that. But these are going to be, I think, a little bigger with what they're proposing. So that's signage, and that really is the only thing that the planning board did not support the deviations for. They did support the increase in impervious surface in the apartment area. They wanted 65% instead of 55. The planning board supported that. They do have a reduced buffer on this commercial area on the east side, buffering against the single-family that you'll hear about and the multifamily on the next application. That's a 10-foot instead of a 25-foot. The planning board supported that, because they are putting a buffer on the next lot as well. These projects did come in together, although they're separate projects. So that's, that also was supported. So all the deviations that he asked for were supported with the exception of the signs, with the exception of allowing this many signs and allowing them in the buffer area. So Mr. Hockadel did prepare this lovely slide, which kind of fits everything in with the application you're going to hear next, and the target that's already been approved. This is where it is. You'll see a gap between this site and the target site. There is an opening there on 46 that we don't have application for at the moment. And then that big yellow area you see, that'll be your next application that you're here tonight. So we are definitely filling in that corner. But that's, wanted to give you a little bit of information on where that is. You've already seen this from the applicant. This is the apartment. You're not being asked to consider this. The way it looks, it looks like it will meet our standards for non-residential, but this is not something that you're approving. This is just their conceptual rendering, and that's all they have.
Ms. Kato, could you put that one back? Thank you. I miss the big screen, by the way. As I'm getting older, that's harder to see. Okay. Board, any questions for Ms. Kato? Commissioner Finnegan?
Is there any way, if we do something with the monument signs, where we can say that they're not eight feet? Or do we have to go with that, because that's how it's written? Because I feel like when I look at monument signs, you know, I'm a little better than five feet. On any given day, I think I'm six feet, but I'm usually taller than a monument sign, which definitely isn't eight feet. And there was a lot of blue stars. So when I picture that in my head, that seems congested and not the way we want to look.
Agreed. This is definitely a corridor from the parkway, although it's not exactly the parkway exit. We know that. It certainly is close enough that this was a corridor. This is a PUD, so y'all can put any condition you want to in there. This is your ability.
Thank you. Board? Commissioner Bayes?
Well, again, I. As we grow, I would just like to see some uniformity. And I would like to see uniformity in signs and not have, you know, various types. And I like the monument sign, and I'm perfectly fine with those being a little taller. But again, I think we need to set some standards on what that height is going to be, so that they're not all over the board, you know? Maybe they're 11 feet, and that's it, you know? But we have those signs. I know, but like, as far as like the drainage retention area, is there any way to, so that it just, it, it's kept nice? It kind of, it has a look to it that's more like a beautification, as opposed to just something sitting there, and the grass growing up, and it looks ugly? And, and if it's going to have a fence around it, can it be a black fence, not something that's?
Yeah, the, the.
Chain-linked fence.
They don't have fences around them very often anymore, because that's based on slope. And most of them nowadays aren't, don't have that kind of slope. As far as making them pretty, I don't know, we hadn't have anything in our code that pushes them into that. So we'd have to say something like that.
Are you done? Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
I'm just going to reiterate that, especially since Ms. Kato just said this is a PED. We can put whatever we want in here. I think Commissioner Bayes and I are on the same track, that we've got to get the signage right. And the applicant had three different examples. I'm fine, just to keep it very simple. I'm fine with the second, third, and fourth. I'm not okay with the pole sign. And it sounds like that can be avoided.
Thank you. Yes.
Just about, about the signage. And I think that's why my concern is about the height, especially when we're talking about so many. The reason that they're monument, and the reason why Ms. Kato is probably saying her understanding is that they're lower. When you have an eight feet, and then you're mentioning 11 feet, that's on the ground. That's why they have pole signs, so it doesn't obstruct view. So if you have an eight-to-11-foot huge sign from the ground up, I mean, that, I can't imagine that looking good. That's going to be very obstructive to view. And I understand what we're saying about not pole signs, but that's the reason for a pole sign to not obstruct that view. When you have a bigger sign, you put it on a pole. So I like the idea of monument signs. I don't love the idea of that many in a row. And I definitely don't like the idea of having them so large. That's all you see is these massive, one right after another, blocking of whatever is behind it and down the road. And I do like the idea of making sure the retainage areas are beautiful. And it sounds like we can make that happen.
Thank you. I, I'm going to tell you, I am not a huge sign fan. And I think that the signs should be the community monument style, where it lists all the restaurants or all the out parcels. I understand what you're saying, but looking at that and all those signs, I am not a fan of. And the reason being is because we want to make this uniformed. I know that the applicant is very well-versed in this, and it will look nice. But we kind of lose control. And if you're saying that Outback needs its own, say, Outback came there, and they needed their own sign, you're going to see the Outback building. If Outback is listed on a, let's say, a common community sign, I'm just, that's just too many signs. And it's silly to be, to get tripped up on signs. But we want to exactly put out the image of manicured and.
exactly put out the image of manicured and, um, uniformativity, is that a word you, you being uniform? Uniform, but, um, I like my word better, but, um, that's where I'm gonna go, so I would like to kind of pin that down. Um, this is literally in my backyard, and this is something that, um, we desperately need, and, um, I support this, but the signs are something that I think that we need to, um, look at. So how, how would you like to do that?
Just to remind you that the red here, the red stars on forty, are the larger, um, pylon, the larger directional signs with all of them on there supposedly at the entrances. So I, I, I wanna caution, net, when you say no pole signs, I think those two, you're probably sounding like you're okay with, those particular
Yeah, I, I like, I like the, the, the community.
Monument.
Yeah, monument signs, I don't like all these blue stars.
Right, no, they, they do have the new language that they propose, and if it's larger than one acre, um, it can have its own. Um, I don't have acre size for these proposed out parcels, so I don't know how many that would apply to.
Can I interject and just help maybe a little bit, uh? Am I allowed to?
Well, we're not open to the public yet, but I would
I'm the applicant though too, so I don't know, maybe it may just help speed this along on the signs, because we love just the monument signs, we weren't quite sure, because we think the monument sign actually classes it up. The sign that Joanne is referring to that we did at the McDonald's and Mavis is actually an eight-foot-high sign. It's actually eight by fourteen, there's a one-foot base, and we're required to keep it under a hundred square feet on each side, it's a shared sign. That's in our development agreement, so that sign that is referenced is, is an eight-foot-high sign. We want to keep a, a continuity throughout in the monument signs. The, all the ones that you see, it's really just an illustration of if it was all one-acre lots. Those lots are all laid out at a hundred and fifty feet wide because of the depth of the road. We do not envision having all one-acre lots. Most of the restaurants that we're talking to really are about two acres in size, and so there'll be one sign for the, the two-acre, uh, two-acre in size. We're looking at shared signs for anybody that does a one-acre parcel or less. So we would be basically cutting that in half from what you see on the plan. But we love the idea of just sticking with the monument signs, I think the one thing that we've always demonstrated in our projects, we want it as bad as you, this uniformity throughout, we will control that as we sell the parcels to keep consistency for the signs o- on this property. But the main thing is having the ability to put the monument sign in that buffer area as those, those, uh, pictures that Chuck showed you illustrate, to be able to give the visibility. Today, as you know, a lot of the parcels along four ninety-one are a hundred feet wide by four hundred feet deep. Numerous commercial parcels, and correct me if I'm wrong, every one of those parcels can come in for their own sign, for their building on the road. Um, so what you see is illustrated as a hundred and fifty-foot-wide, one-acre lots, and again, anything an acre or less will be combined. But we, we certainly support the monument signs, the pylon signs would be at the main entrances because we're gonna have, we're gonna have development behind, they need exposure. So for the, for the parcels along the highway, that's what we would, we would support.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kato, were you done with your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And, and can you, commis-, uh, Ms. Lynn, you have something?
I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was gonna say, page seven eighteen has the examples of the four different kinds of signs, if y'all want to focus on the types of signs, seven eighteen at the top left.
Thank you.
Sometimes it helps to have digital.
Um, so those are the four types of signs that I s- that I'm seeing, and I would just, I would just say, I, I appreciate what Mr. Cappuccelli is saying, but if it's not in writing
Absolutely.
On this piece of paper that you guys approved, then it can't be enforced by your staff, so while we all understand and, and appreciate Mr. Cappuccelli, I would urge you to have it in writing, in a, in a condition.
Well, board, with this, I'm, I would prove, I, my preference would be type C and type D.
This was at the two entrances, type B.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it's not uniform with type D, or type B is not uniform with type C. I guess it could be, but, um.
I'm a C and D.
I, I'm a C and D.
So none of the type B signs, am I hearing? I think we've gotten really deep in the weeds on this.
Well, we need to have it, we need to have it spelled out, and I think that's the problem. By, by the applicant adding the verbiage, I think that's what threw us, or threw me.
My, my understanding is that, is, is that it looks like the majority of these signs will be like a type C sign or, or D sign, and then having the, uh, the Bs at the major entrances. And if they have a, um, uh, a tenant that is set back or, or further behind, uh, the trees, the buffer, then at that point that they would, that they would offer, uh, only at that point that they would offer a pole sign. Um, I, I'm, I'm really fine with, with the way this application has come forward. Um, if, you know, if it's, um, uh, if it's a pole sign that is, that is the, um, the, the deal breaker, then, you know, maybe limit it to one of those, uh, on, on the, in the, in the whole PUD. Um, or eliminate those altogether, I think that's, I think that's a bit restrictive. Um, but, I don't know, I, I just, I think we're getting awful deep in the weeds on this application. It looks like quality development.
It, and, and, are you done?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I agree with you, but I would rather have it spelled out and not just be left to the discretion of the staff. So, can you get me there, Ms. Kato? Um, listening to all of you is a little, it's a little hard to make them all, but I, I think that you're, you're saying the pylon sign type B might be okay at the two entrance points as proposed. Um, but otherwise you wanna see type C, um, allowed on the out parcels.
Pylon D.
Or D.
I, yeah.
D, D is eight-foot high, it's a little big, little top, two feet, two feet taller, so, um, C or D, but not an A, I think is what you're saying.
When I have a problem with this, I think thirty-five feet is just really tall.
It is an old
It's very tall, and it's very in your face.
Agreed. That's, uh, that's our code, but it's been around for a while, so, yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Commissioner Davis?
First, I wanna say, Mr. Cappuccelli, you're, you know, I, we all know your organization that you represent, and you do high-style, very excellent developments, and I believe the same of Mr. Dix as well, so none of this was meant as any sort of, we know you're on the same page as we are, we just wanna, like she said, make sure that it's in writing. Um, I have a real aversion to pole signs, just from a downscaling and something, so I would be good with at least limiting to none of those. Um, and I certainly want to support this a hundred percent, and I can't, where did Mr. Dix go? Back there, oh, you're hiding, yeah, you were over here, weren't you? This, do not confuse me, I'm always trying to track people, and you're right behind him, anyway, um, so I, you know, absolutely, I'm a hundred percent for this, I think it's a fantastic development, and we want to help, you know, make this come to fruition in a good way.
Okay, so, at this time, if the board, yes?
I'm sorry, the only other thing that, that you guys have talked about that Ms. Kato didn't summarize is the number of signs, because remember the PDC limited it from what they had, so I don't know if y'all wanna talk about, sounds like y'all narrowed down the type, now do you wanna talk about the number?
Well, I said I didn't like all those blue dots.
Right, the PDC said, uh, five for the, up to five for the ten out parcels, uh, Mr. Pigeon has proposed, if it's larger than one acre, it can have its own, so that is a different, two different viewpoints.
And could could nine of these be bigger than one acre?
I don't have a size, um, I thought Mr. Cappuccelli was saying that, that, right now that they all would meet that, but
So that would be nine possible signs?
Right, but I think he was saying they're not planning on actually developing that many.
Okay, well, let, let me do this, let me, let me, um, if you're done, can, I'd like to open it up to the public to see the, um, anybody at this time that would like to speak on this project, if, if you're in favor of this project, please come forward and, uh, give us your, your opinion, do I, wait, did, do I need a motion before I do that?
No, ma'am, this is a public
Okay, thank you. I'm, I, it's starting to get late. Okay, so is anyone from public, would you like to come forward and speak on this, in favor of this project? Anyone?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, Mr. Administrator, Attorney and Clerk, Josh Wooten, President and CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. And I just, I wanna give a little bit of history lesson to those of us that have been around these parts around forty years, and I know some of y'all have, that, um, the comprehensive plan says if you don't like growth, um, I'm a native Floridian, I don't like unbridled growth, but, um, the chamber has always supported that growth should take place in the central ridge, that's where the utilities are, that's where the comprehensive plan drives it. And we've been discovered, we have a major, um, parkway coming through our community, there's a lot of things that y'all can do to, to tell us how we're gonna look, and there's a lot of lands that y'all can protect, and I like the discussion about, you know, the details that you're doing, although I will tell you, I was always told when I sat up there, don't try to design somebody's project from behind there, uh, because it can get you in a strange place and, and make for a long meeting. However, I like the fact that y'all are asking all these questions, 'cause the citizens are saying, we want quality development, we want buffers, we don't want sign pollution, light pollution, and I think that y'all are very close to something. But this is where, for the last forty years, fifty years, the, everybody's wanted the growth to go, we knew it was coming. Um, land is like a fine wine, you open it, you know, right at the right time, and, and this is it. Um, so, um, it's, it's a good project, it's in the right place, that's the important part. Is, um, nobody that's been around here for any length of time should be surprised that four eighty-six and four ninety-one and the four ninety-one corridor was going to be where the growth was gonna take place if in fact we got to this point, we're at this point, make sure that they, um, in this particular developer, I don't think you have to worry about following the, um, development restrictions. But, um, I'm all for the good questions, but with a little tweaking of the signage, you know, no pole signs, and maybe five up front, whatever y'all come up with, um, I would urge that you support it, it's in the right place, and it's the right time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this project? Going once, going twice? Okay, at this time, is there anybody else that would like to s- be, speak in opposition of this project? Going once, going twice? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask one further question? If we're looking at this conceptual plan here and all these out parcels.
This is for the applicant or staff?
Either one. So you're gonna have your access management road that comes in, correct? And these are all your interior roads? So if we're talking about all these that can be developed, these could be individual parcels that could technically have their own sign, correct?
Yes.
If they're, well
If there're lots of record.
If there're lots of record.
These are not, you're creating a new PUD on, on land, these are very small, we wouldn't normally allow them this, this narrow. Uh, he's correct, if you have a lot of record, you can have a sign, these are not lots of record, these are smaller than normal because it's a PUD, that, that's what they're allowed to ask for in the PUD, they can do that, so, just, just caution on that, but you're okay, you're on the right track.
But this would be commercial development?
Yes, absolutely, it's already his own commercial.
Would this be the, would you be seeing the front of the building or the back of the building? From the highway?
That's the app of that.
Mr. Pigeon or Mr. Cappuccelli who would like to answer that? Mr. Pigeon?
Yes, I'd like to answer that, just state the question for the record when we're time.
So if, if we're looking at these potential developments, these commercial nodes right here, if you're coming in on your access road, would you, would this be the back of the building or the front of the building on four eighty-six?
Each tenant has their corporate policy, for example, Outbacks and stuff would face to the front with the front of their building, so you can see it from the highway, and, and the back would be parking. Others wanted just the opposite, but we would encourage them to have the nicer face of the building, whether it's patio or outside dining or something, facing, you know, the road. Oriented it properly, we try to work with each one, but, uh, just like to point out, these lots are a hundred and fifty-foot wide, code requires a minimum a hundred-foot wide. These lots are larger than what the code requires. And it's planned in engineering to s- to see, this is the worst-case scenario of multiple, multiple lots, a hundred and fifty-foot wide minimum, at least providing one acre. Most tenants, unless there's, uh, it's a different type of development, wouldn't use just one acre.
So then the behind this is your residential?
Correct.
So I, I guess what I'm looking at, if you potentially develop these, these are all commercial, and we have monument signs, and they have their own commercial lighted sign on their building. I, I think the, I think the monument signs takes care of it because you can physically see them, and I don't think you really need big tall pole signs interior for residential development.
Madam Chair, if I might, we have no objection to eliminating the pole signs, we don't like them either.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear, that's all I was asking, that's all I was asking.
We'd like to add a sentence to condition eleven that says, pole signs type A will not be allowed.
Thank you, I said it was in my background, my backyard.
I'm not sure how many tenants I just eliminated, but we'll go with it.
Can we get a, a, an exception on the thirty-five feet?
Yes.
Of the set.
That's also the request.
I don't like thirty-five feet.
You know, the first sentence would read, the site may have no more than two pylon signs, each side not exceeding three hundred square feet in size and twenty-five foot maximum height. And that twenty-five feet is, so they're a little bit above all the low shrubs, you can see the sign when you're looking for it.
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion?
I am.
Can you craft that?
Well, based on competent and substantial evidence, I would make a motion that we approve CPA AA PUD dash twenty-two dash eighteen. Um, with the, there are fifteen total conditions, and modifying condition eleven to reflect a maximum of two pylon signs, no pole signs, and a maximum height to the two pylon signs of twenty, uh, twenty-five feet. I do want to make sure, uh, that we, uh, are approving the, um, maximum allowable si- uh, um, landmark signs, um, monument signs, uh, that they have requested, not with the PDC approved. That would be my motion.
So the frontage parcels larger than one acre will be allowed to have an individual monument sign?
Yes. I feel like the applicant, uh, has given us what we've looked for, um, this is a quality project, they've put it together nicely. Uh, we've got nobody here objecting to it, we've got some good stuff out of this, they're good, they're bringing good stuff to the community, and I'd urge you to support my motion.
Second, I do wanna point of clarification, our attorney wanted something else in there, yes? The change, does that have to be read into the motion about the staff discretion?
Well, you would, you would take out, I, I don't know if you're using his version eleven or our version eleven.
I think we kinda got a hybrid, if you, I'll, I'll try to read it, what I'm getting from y'all. The site may have no more than two pylon shared signs, each side not exceeding three hundred square feet in size with a twenty-five-foot maximum height, placed at one, one of this, kind of a forty-six access locations and outside of visibility triangles and required buffers. Um, adjoining frontage parcels one acre or smaller in size will be required to use a combined sign, frontage parcels Um, adjoining frontage parcels one acre or smaller in size will be required to use a combined sign, frontage parcels larger, combined monument sign, excuse me, frontage parcels larger than one acre will be allowed to have an individual monument sign. Sign separation and size shall be in accordance with LDC and cannot be located within visibility triangles or required buffers. I took out all the, unless otherwise approved by staff, kind of language.
I'm good with that.
I have a question, did, did I?
Do we have a motion, did we get a second?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I have a question, did, did that say that the, that the monument signs are not allowed within the required buffer?
Correct, do you want them to be in the buffer?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was outside the buffer.
That, that's what, that's what the PDC supported and that's what the code says, is they shouldn't be in the buffer.
Or the roadside of buffer.
Uh, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, uh, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. Uh, I would think the, the quality development that I'm envisioning has these, these taller trees as the buffer, and we've got the monument signs, uh, as we saw in these pictures, I mean, that's what I envisioned. I think the, the, the type of development that we're talking about, uh, rather than the buffer being forward of the signs sitting back behind them, that doesn't seem to make any sense to me.
Um, pictures are, may I? Pictures are worth a thousand words. So, the, uh, the applicant's PowerPoint, the Outback sign and the Longhorn Steakhouse sign. Is that considered in the buffer? Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Do you have a page, a packet page number?
No, because I'm all digital.
At the bottom right-hand corner?
No.
A beach page, it doesn't say?
Nope.
Those two pictures of Outback and Longhorn both look, look to me like they're within a required buffer.
Right, he, he, he provided you ones that were in a buffer, he did not provide you any that were not.
Okay, then in the buffer would be fine.
Yeah, I, I think that.
Like I said, that's why I brought up pictures, is so we can make sure we're talking about the same thing.
So I would say that we scratch that part, that we would allow the, uh, uh, the monument, uh, the monument signs and the, uh,
And, and do we have a height for the monument signs? Um, they're proposing eight feet or less on their diagram, but that's not really in our code. Our code says six, max six. You want eight, you want six or less?
I think so.
I'm okay with them being taller and less signage, but that's me, I mean, I can.
Well, they, you're already saying they can have individual signs.
You're not giving less signage.
You're not making them combined.
If code says six, we should stick with that.
Now, the, what, what we did say, Madam Chair, um, what we heard was that the, the monument sign directly across the street is eight feet. Um, and if we want consistency, I, I wouldn't think that we're gonna want drivers looking for a sign that's this high, and then we've got a sign that's this high, and then.
It's not really across the street, though.
It's across four eighty-six.
It, it's on four ninety-one, but it's, it's.
It's on four ninety-one.
Development is across the street.
I would think, I would think uniformity, um, should be kept for that, that corridor. Um, if we want to, um, I think if this board wants to address, um, you know, lowering those, um, that, that number, we should do that at a different time. Uh, but that, that corridor right there, this is a- as, as, uh, Mister Rootin came up and said, this is what we've been looking forward to for forty years.
Oh, amen.
We're getting quality development here, um, eight-foot monument signs, as you can see from this, this Longhorn sign, this Outback sign in the picture, that's not trashing up the corridor. Those are quality signs, that's what's gonna happen there.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes. Um, if we could just move off of signs for one second, I do agree with Commissioner Baze, I would like to see less signs. We are talking about quality development, I understand, I don't know that seeing a sign every a hundred and fifty feet goes along with that, but my concern is, I, and I hope, I heard it wrong, because Commissioner Baze asked the question. Did, Mister Pidgen, did you say that possibly driving with this quality development down forty-six, we could see front of a building, back of a building, front of a building, back of a building? That gives me a lot of concern.
Uh, you would see a building, I can't tell you what they call the front or the back, but we would not wanna see, as a developer, the, the back of a building with no facades, the code doesn't allow that. The code says fifty percent landscaping, the code says it must comply with chapter thirty-seven forty, which says it's gotta have relief back and forth, no several, so the code already addresses the appearance of the buildings, front, side and back. Now, whether they would allow patrons to enter from the four eighty-six side or enter from the furniture side, I don't know which, what their site plan is gonna look like in the individual site. They will all look nice from the road, I can pretty much guarantee that.
May I address Miss Katu?
Yes.
So, is that accurate? So if we are down there, will we not see ugly backs of buildings?
Right, fortunately, our code, if it's visible to the public, it can't be a, a concrete wall, flat, anything like that. We do have offsets, we have requirements, what, there's a lot of requirements, so every thirty feet, they have to have some relief, there's some foundation landscaping like you talked about. We're, we're, we're tight on when, when it's visible, that, that back construction entrance kind of look is not, not allowed anymore.
Not allowed.
So we're, we're good on that.
Okay.
And just pointed that, the new culvers, the back of the building faces county road four ninety-one. But you don't know this, the back of the building, it looks very nice.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, uh, do you have anything more you'd like to? Uh, and I think almost even Mavis tires, technically, you're kinda looking at the back of a building. But we, through code and, and our, our, our building code, you make it look appealing. These, these developers are not going to put a dumpster there on four eighty-six that, th- this is going, they, they wanna attract people, so, um, it was a great question, but, uh, yeah. Kinda threw a little wrench in there by throwing that in there, but, um, it's.
That's a good point.
Thank you. Um, is there any, any other?
I, I, just because, I just wanna clarify. All entrances into these out parcels will be inside the access management, there will be no individual driveways off of four eighty-six, correct? Cause you, you just confused me when you said that.
You said access from four eighty-six for the parcels or four nine, or, or internal, and I, I caught that too.
Yeah.
Well, the master plan, in compliance with Land Development Code, does show that there could be a right turn only to get in to some of those parcels.
They have to meet engineering standards.
Right, it meets the engineering standards of the Land Development Code. We, we don't know if there's a specific tenant, um, that would prefer to have a right turn in, and if it meets the code, it meets the spacing, it meets the safety, that that would, would occur.
So there might be more than the three access points off of four eighty-six, there could be more than three.
Have you really to say no to that, okay, but the code might allow it.
Absolutely not, I, I, we don't, I mean, this is the problem we have on four ninety-one right now. We don't need any more independent driveways going down roads with people distracted, looking around and pulling into an individual when we, we're putting all, you are, you're putting all this access road management, I think you need to get traffic off and get them into the driveways of where they're going and not off of a major corridor.
Miss Katu, we're, we're approving the three entrances into this, correct? If somebody wants an additional turn into there, that will have to come before us at a future date, correct?
Not necessarily, if it meets Land Development Code, um, condition number five is access shall be for forty-six as outlined and will need to meet access management standards. By saying it will need to meet access management standards, it is possible that there could be a right-in, right-out that meets access management standards and, and wouldn't come before you, but would just be allowed by code, unless prohibited in these conditions. So.
Could they say they only want the three shown on here, correct?
Correct.
Change that condition?
That condition can be changed if you'd like to do so.
I would support the motion if, um, Commissioner Cannard would modify his motion to reflect just the three access points.
Off of four eighty-six?
Off of four eighty-six.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I may. You gotta be real careful with that motion, please. Uh, there are current medical facilities that insist on having a right-in, right-out. It's in accordance with the code, it's in accordance with Land Development Code, it's in accordance with everything going on here. Um, that's always been approved. DOT standards, county standards, it's safer to get them off and in than everybody jamming up at the intersection. So, I would say, let's error on the side of safe design that's already proven to be safe. We understand, we don't want the corridor to look ugly, but I don't think that condition would work if we added that.
And, do you wanna add something?
I was gonna say, I, I, what was running through my head is, who are we blocking from coming? What, what, um, that's a slippery slope. And we don't know who, who we would maybe really, really want to come. And we're saying you can't have that, and they're like, well, then that's a deal breaker. So I, I would not sup- I, I, I love that you have the three, if, if it happens, hopefully you won't sell nine that want the right turn in and, and out, but, um, I, I, I'm fine with your motion.
Madam Chair.
I think Commissioner Cannard first.
Excuse me.
I, um, I appreciate where Commissioner Baze is, is wanting to go with this. Um, but I am, uh, I, I don't feel like I wanna amend my motion, I think we, we need to be, um, very careful about, as was laid out from, uh, uh, from the podium, about designing somebody's project up here. I'm all in favor of tightening up, um, code that we feel like needs to be tightened up to create greater, gre- greater uh, commercial development, uh, but I feel like this is a great project's been brought forward, and, uh, I think my, my motion should stand, and I hope that it will pass.
Sheriff Finnegan, you have the floor.
I'm gonna stand with Commissioner Baze on this one, and, and here's why. And I know, sir, that you said that, you know, it would bar some medical facilities, but I'm thinking of the medical corridor that we have now, and when you go into, I don't even know what's all there, Dr. Masula, Suncoast Dermatology's there, I think a dentist, you pull in and then you have to drive down that back street, everybody doesn't have access, and they're all medical facilities, and they seem to do just fine, so when we're talking about the looks, I mean, if we're going for the signs, and now we're gonna have all the driveways, I, I don't know that that's safe or is going to look good, I, I think she's dead on with, um, going in, there's three ways to get in them, so I don't know that that makes it difficult, it's not like they get a one-way and have to drive way down to get to where they're going, they could split the difference in the middle. It seems like that's plenty of access.
How many can really, how many could of the nine be turned in and just three?
Three, yes.
Right now, I, I have no idea how many right-in, right-outs they might qualify for.
We tried to put a right-in, right-out everywhere we could, I think we could have four, four.
Including the three.
Yeah, you have the three full meeting openings.
Yeah.
And you could possibly, because it's a half, more than a half a mile road, you could potentially have four, if every, everyone was approved for four. That's gotta go through engineering, four additional right-in only.
Four additional, okay.
Four additional right-in only. But we don't know where that particular tenant is, is going that needs a right-in. So we can, we can limit it, I mean, say, limited to two, uh, we can at least work with that.
I, I would, uh, support limiting additional two, but I would, um, I'm not gonna block the potential of a future that really, really wants that right turn in, so if you would, if you would consider limiting, we don't want seven turn-ins, but I would go with, uh, I, I could, I could support it with, uh, two possible, we don't even know if that's, if you could sell it to that person, that company. But I, I'm, I'm not, I, otherwise, I'm gonna support the way the motion is right now.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I, I appreciate your support, I'm not changing my motion, I think it's time for this board to get out of the redesigning of development business. Uh, the PDC, uh, did not have a problem with the, uh, the number of entrances. Uh, I think that it's, um, that it's not appropriate for, uh, an applicant to come here and get, uh, a, a partial redesign of their project, uh, done from the dais. I mean, I appreciate, and that's, I, I don't mean to demean the concerns, I, I understand where everybody's, I feel like I do anyway. Uh, but we've got a motion on the floor, we've got a second, um, I would, I would urge my colleagues to support it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not sure that the P, this came up in the PDC, and we wouldn't have talked about it until you said something, so, uh, when I think about transportation and I think about how congested this whole corridor is going to be through there, I think we're asking for problems. I mean, you've got the, you've, that's part of the reason you do the interior access management, is to relieve your main corridor, to get the traffic off. You're going to have target, you're gonna have the corner four eighty-six and four ninety-one, you're gonna have this target up here and that congestion, and you're gonna have these. I mean, it's going to be one access management point after another, and for the life of me, I can't imagine why a, a, a company would want to jeopardize their clientele, trying to get them in and off of a road that's going to be backed up. And I don't think that we're, we have a hard time supporting any ingress egress, coming in and out of that, I mean, if that's, you know, what is our plan for that? I mean, I wish we had somebody here from Mary or Engineering or somebody, because I, I just, I don't. I think we're asking for problems, I think we drive down four ninety-one right now, and you've got right-hand turns going in and out of independent driveways, and you've got traffic driving fifty-five miles an hour, and they're stopping and turning, I can't tell you the number of times people are pulling out across the highway. I mean, let's face it, we've got a bunch of retired elderly people, and they're not quick to react. And I just, I just think this, I, you're gonna have a residential component in the back, you're gonna have all this retail, I think it's a very intense uh, traffic pattern, and I think the more that you can move them to the interior of this, the better off it's going to be, and I think it's going to produce a nicer outcome for everybody.
Madam Chair. In respect to my fellow commissioner, I, I don't think that we're trying to redesign a project, we're, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, which is, looking at it, I, I think that we were for that, I, I don't think that we realized that all of these, um, entryways would be put in here, it looked like there was access from the back, which seems completely acceptable. And the reason I think that we are standing firm in that, once, once you say yes, you can't take it back. I think we all wanna see this project happen, and the way it's drawn out, it looks wonderful. But, once we allow this traffic nightmare, we're all gonna be getting the calls later of, why did, why did you do this? Now there's accidents and what, there's problems, and there's all this congestion, this, this growth, you said that we would do growth correctly, and you're not doing it correctly. So I think we're just speaking up, not trying to reget, redesign your project, but doing what we are supposed to be doing and trying the best we can to get you where you need to be, and keeping our promises to the community that we're gonna do our best to give our opinions and try to give it, do it the right way.
Miss Katu, the cross, could you sh- walk me through the cross-access of this development?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding, what do you mean by cross-access for the development?
You come in?
Interior access.
Okay.
There's, there's not a service road, so you would have, you would ha- are you gonna have cross-access through these, through these, um, general commercial lots or developments?
Will they have that interior drive, uh, road in the middle, that that's what they're gonna have to use?
So we're gonna count that in?
Right, that, that serves as cross-access for the project for PUD.
Okay. Madam Chairman, there is cross-access with the, the development that's there, the clear sky. I think there is cross-access on that side, and the other side isn't developed yet, so it looks like it's gonna be stubbed out.
Yeah, so throughout the PUD and on either side, yes, that's correct.
I'm go- I'm gonna support the motion. Anybody else? So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
I'm just gonna ask one simple question. Would the applicant have any problem limiting it to less than four, to go down to two? Just so we could get a five, possibly a five-o vote?
Currently, the master plan only shows three.
I see that, I, I, yeah. So you have three primary entrances, and then you have three right-in, right-out.
And we have the three right-in, right-out, that's to get the traffic easily in and off the highway, and not having them all go to the intersection. And, and causing more problems and backups at the intersection. This, this is the safest design in accordance with your code, unless you're saying the code is not correct.
No.
But I understand as you're saying, would we limit it to only four access points for this PUD?
No, the, the three median ones, and then the four right-in, right-out, limiting that downward. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to weave something together up here. Um, Commissioner Canard brings up a very good point. This is the business that y'all are in. We are not in your business. We also understand that you do very quality developments. So I'm in a rough, kind of a difficult situation up here that I don't want to spend the rest of my days in this county, drive by the development. But wow, I really, with that one, you know, I should have stopped something. But, um, you know, I'll go ahead and show my cards, and that if you say, no, we can't limit it, I'll vote with the two that are gonna vote with it, and you're gonna have a three-two vote. So I'm asking you, as professionals, can you limit it without limiting what you're developing that?
And we could limit that, and I said we could go down to two, which means one intermediate right-in, right-out between each of the main intersections.
Right.
Because we don't know where that tenant goes that needs that right-in, right-out. And that's safe-in, safe-out access. And that's what it comes down to, safe-in, safe-out, and not force everybody at the intersection where they get frustrated because they can't get in and out. This is a safe, so we can limit it to two, one between each.
And would that meet your needs, you believe, for safe-in, safe-out?
That would help, go a long way.
And would that help your commercial needs as well, in terms of selling the property?
Yes.
Is that sufficient for you to try to get more than a three-two vote?
I'd have three, but we would be willing to go to two, as Chuck indicated, uh, for the right-in, right-outs.
May I ask a question to your fellow? Would that be with turn lanes?
All of the right-in, right-outs would be a turn lane to get them off of the travel, slow down and turn in. They're, they're not your driveways. They're not driveways. They're, they're right-turn-in, safe movements to get in and out.
And I have a question, it should be up to two then? I'm not sure that two even qualify. He's the engineer, and we'll let our engineers determine that. But if that's what you're looking for, it would be, um, no more than the three access points plus up to two right-in, right-out turn lanes, meeting access management standards.
And the, the applicant or the commercial business is responsible for those turn lanes?
That, yeah, that's part of their permitting. I just wanted to spell that out, make sure.
I appreciate that, yes. Okay.
So I'm, I'm not officially asking that. Um, I would like to see us give them a five-o vote. Um, if that's not something that we're interested in doing, then I'll just vote the way the motion is right now.
I would, I would like to.
It's up to Canard, because that's his motion.
And, hold on. I would like to see a five-o vote, because I think this is much needed. I'm, like I said, I'm gonna just keep saying this, this is in my backyard, and I think it is what we need. And, but I wanna, I know, I know you're gonna do it right, but I wanna make sure that we are doing our due diligence and that, yeah, keep it classy. So, Commissioner Bays.
So those right-in, right-outs, you, those tenants would provide ingress egress off of 486?
Yes, they would construct a right-turn lane and an opening driveway, so cars can get off and turn in. There would be two of those proposed, one if we needed them, one between each of the full median openings. So it's a limited access, meets limited access design criteria. It certainly far exceeds your code. Your code allows closer spacing, even three we showed allowed a lot closer spacing, but we wanna do proper engineering. So we can limit that to two if we needed them.
We might not even need it.
There's an egress too. You said, you said exit, but there's also one to get back on the road.
Right, it, it's a right turn to move in. Uh, but they do allow cars to come out and do a right turn to continue to head west.
And there's an acceleration lane?
Deceleration lane.
Well, there's a decel to get in, is there an acceleration to get out?
The State Department, and you do not do acceleration lanes anymore on state highways or county highways. They're more dangerous than making people wait until it's a clear, and then they turn out.
Would it only be one car lane in the decel?
Right, it's just one lane in, one lane out, and one lane for the decel.
The decel lane, would it just be enough for one car?
Yep, right, correct, one car, and meet the length criteria for deceleration, move over, decelerate, turn in. Everybody else continues to go.
I think we're setting a bad precedent.
Okay, Board, we need to wrap this up. I think we've beat this horse to death. Commissioner Canard has a motion on the floor, as is with the... I, I, do you wanna re, do you wanna read the motion again?
Are we gonna change it to Mrs. Davis or Commissioner Davis?
Commissioner Canard said he felt comfortable with this motion. Did you want to entertain Commissioner Davis's?
I don't think so. I mean, if we're not, if we're not going to get to, um, the five-o vote, then I think let's vote on the measure. We, we have chewed on this a long time.
I agree. Would you read the motion back for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Based on confident and substantial evidence, motion to approve, adopt, and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinances for CPA AAPD 2218 with the 15 conditions, modifying condition number 11, which was read into record.
Thank you. And that was also modifying 15 with, was that the one that had the verbiage?
11 was the one that limited the signs. And she read what the modification was into the record.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, so Board, all in favor of this motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
This passes three-two. Thank you. Okay, moving on to T3. Madam Attorney. Okay, Commissioners, with regard to T3, which is PUD-22-09, do you have any ex parte communications to disclose? And we'll start with Commissioner Canard.
No.
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 No. Thank you. At the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider, uh, an Atlas Amendment. It's an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amendment to Citrus County land use Atlas map by redesignating approximately 135.65 acres from the medium-density residential district to the medium-density residential district with a planned unit development for single-family and multifamily residential uses, providing for conflicts, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And I believe the applicant is here. Mr. Pigeon. Are you ready?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I will hope this goes a little quicker.
And try not to, try not to open up a can of worms.
Yeah, try not.
You know.
I just, I'm too honest. I just tell it like it is. Once again, for the record, professional address, 925 Southeast 17th Street in Ocaliflora. Name is Chuck Pigeon, professional engineer, state of Florida, and representing the applicant, CR486 LLC. And, um, this is a infill development. Uh, we've been watching this property for, I've been watching this property for, since 1969. Uh, and I'm sad to see my original golf course go away, because that's where I used to play pasture golf with my Uncle Jimmy on Black Diamond Ranch, when it was the ranch. And we would chase hogs and horses and everything else out there. So with that, um, with a little bit of sadness, but I'm pleased I'm doing this in this development. So the location, this development is wedged between the commercial property we just talked about and Black Diamond. It is, um, pasture land, and, uh, we've studied this, and we've laid out a subdivision plan. Next slide, please. That, um, works with the community layout to put the traffic in the locations where the county has provided and allowed for access management. Uh, so we spread out traffic, and we make it a nice walking community. Um, so to give you a little insight, it basically has two components to this project. It's a single-family detached homes, and it's a townhome zero-lot line area with a little higher density. Overall, um, the next slide, please, from a traffic operations standpoint, uh, we pointed out that there are actually three main access points, one on County Road 491, and two on County Road 486. Next slide, please. Within the community, uh, there will be amenities. There is gonna be a clubhouse and community facility. Uh, there will be perhaps a pickleball courts. There's, uh, mailbox stations set throughout that are off of the, uh, main roads. Uh, give you an example of one of the mailbox stations in the top photo. Uh, there'll be walking, uh, in multi-lane, multipurpose trails and sidewalks throughout the community, uh, and, um, open space recreation area. Uh, we, uh, designed it to exceed the county standard for open space, but we do commit to at least the, uh, the minimum 20%, but we're exceeding that right now with this design. There are a number of little pocket parks. There are access over to the YMCA. Uh, there are dog parks and, and a little playground itself, trying to be a more of a self-contained community. Within this community, there, um, is proposed to have a gated section with more security, uh, as well as walking and open for traditional single-family, uh, home sites. Next slide, referring to the townhome area and the zero-lot line area. We are looking at attached two-story townhome, uh, products. The, um, units would all have a minimum two-car parking, in, including, and some would have garages. The end units have two-car garages, the middle units have single-car garages, but all of them would be able to park at least two vehicles. Uh, there are tone-type colors, more, more natural-looking, uh, just larger home look. And then, uh, within the actual, refer to it as the townhome areas, uh, there'd be a neighborhood and open space. Uh, there's a 25-foot buffer around that, we'll talk about that and show you those next. Within there, also the mailbox stations, uh, and then sidewalks and curb and gutter throughout the townhome area. Next slide gives you a little bit of an indication of what we consider the zero-lot line type product. Uh, the units in the middle would butt up to each other as a zero-lot line. Uh, and those would be platted as individual lots, uh, with zero-lot line. They'd be about 10 feet or, or at least 10 feet in the back, and at least, uh, 5, 15 feet on the ends. Uh, we kept that closer to the zero-lot line townhome product so that more of the area is open space, common space, which has common maintenance, common irrigation, and, and common use for all the residents in that neighborhood community area. Uh, but it does allow room for, said, air conditioner units, patios, benches, uh, that type of stuff, where there's still the fee simple ownership. Uh, next slide, just addresses the infrastructure in this area. Uh, we'd have, uh, full, you know, drinking water, central water from the county, central sewer service, uh, provided and in service, uh, with the county. Uh, all the underground utilities, electric, telephone, cable, TV, all underground. Be complete street lighting, uh, on there. And, um, from a vehicle standpoint, uh, we're showing the couple typical sections of the roadways. Uh, the things to point out, uh, would be sidewalks, uh, at least on one side of all roadways and, and higher, uh, streets within the neighborhood. For the main collector roads, we'd have an eight-foot wide, multi-use, multipurpose, or perhaps bicycle, or, or people walking could also use that and not have to use the street itself. Would be a, a very outdoor pedestrian-friendly, uh, movements. In addition to that, there are trails and some off-road trails around the retention ponds and, and access over to the commercial area, where perhaps someone could walk or ride a bike. We have not committed to cart path capability, but we're looking at whether they could use carts and golf carts themselves. If you can go to the next slide, I want to talk to you a little bit about buffers and landscaping, just to let you know we've done our due diligence on that. And I think it would help to, uh, just explain, there's a 20-foot wide buffer all along the north boundary. Code requires a five-foot grass strip. We are proposing 20-foot wide with landscaping. Uh, it'd be, there's an exhibit with three trees for every 100 feet and continuous type hedge and shrubbery for that buffer. Uh, there is a, uh, 25-foot buffer between any of the townhome areas and the single-family residential. There's a combined buffer, we already mentioned, between the apartments to the south and this medium-density residential area. Uh, buffering in all the streetscape areas and pocket parks and intersections, buffering around the stormwater management areas and perimeters around the, uh, retention ponds. Uh, and then all the entrances landscaped and buffered. Once again, it's a kind of a photo of a magnolia buffer, showing the hedge, which is pretty typical of a type-B buffer, uh, all Florida-friendly landscaping. To be a little more specific, on the north, on the next slide, on the north boundary, we're proposing a, call it modified type, uh, B buffer. Uh, and that would be, uh, three trees for every 100 feet, plus a continuous hedgerow. And we would mix those up, so it's not a continuous soldier-looking thing. We'd kind of mix them up, make it look more natural, uh, and provide that buffer. I would point out that adjacent to the north boundary, on the Black Diamond side, is a minimum 30-foot open space, 52 feet to the pavement. Uh, areas are much larger. Uh, we've had some meetings with Black Diamond. We've encouraged them to also plant some stuff along that south side. So now we'd have much larger than a, than a 20-foot buffer. We'd have a 50-foot buffer, or 75, in some cases, over 100-foot buffer. You'll also see, uh, in the master plan, if you could just go back to the master plan, Joe. In the master plan, uh, on that north side, we have designed it where there are these areas where they bump out into the, the residential development proposed. Those would be much more intense landscaping. So in addition to the 20-foot, there's a lot more natural-looking, bigger green areas to, to shade and, uh, and just break up the appearance. We'd have shared drainage. We would have the, uh, the project built, uh, proposed in three phases that would span, you know, upwards of 10 to 15 years maximum. But the three phases, uh, would be logical to access County Road 486 and 491. So we would request your approval. Um, we do not, um, have objections to the conditions, uh, that staff proposed. But we did want some clarifications, uh, to those. And we did provide those to staff, and they were in your handout. So we'll see if the staff.
Did you alter the conditions at all? Modify?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
What page is yours on?
Let me... I need to get the copy of that. I don't think I have a copy right here. Is, is that in your presentation slide at all, Joe, or is it just in the handout?
I don't have it in the presentation slide, but I believe the conditions, as you revise them, are on page 819 of 840.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pigeon.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, please.
This application is requesting to establish a master plan on about 135 acres for single-family and multifamily development in the medium-density residential district. The site you can see here is located between Black Diamond and County Road 486 and County Road 491. It is adjacent to a lot of the development we've seen coming in in that corridor lately. It is bordered by general commercial to the south. There's a little bit of PSO over on 491. And it has planned development residential to both the east, or, excuse me, the west and the north. The applicant is proposing a 405 units total. It's 250 single-family dwelling lots and 155 townhomes. There are some deviations being requested as part of this. The planning and development commission did discuss those. The deviations they're supporting, such as, uh, reduced setbacks, which is something consistent with what we've seen lately in other residential developments, and increased impervious surface ratio, and the increased, um, termination timeframe for the PUD are all reflected in the conditions. The deviations, they did not sup- The deviations they did not support were for the off-site signage and the ability to make modifications to this and increase the intensity. As Mr. Pigeon stated, they are providing, uh, landscape buffers around the entire project and they're also providing landscape buffers between the multifamily and single family components. So everything they're proposing either meet or exceeds land development code. They are providing sidewalks or multi-use trails along at least one side of the roadway. They have access to central water and central sewer. And so this project does seem to be compatible with the surrounding area and the findings have all been found to be positive. And the planning commission did recommend approval of this with conditions at the December fifteenth, twenty twenty two hearing. I will point out the conditions that were provided by the applicant with, he just pointed out, I believe are mostly addressed in our conditions. The, uh, condition he proposed for the townhome access separation, which is the driveway separation for the townhomes, since they're pretty close together, they're twenty-two-foot wide lots, is addressed in condition thirteen. It's the last bullet point. And so that basically says, you know, if they provide us a, a safety study from an engineer saying that it's gonna be safe to have driveway access that close together, then it's okay. The impervious surface ratio condition that he mentioned, I think it was condition ten, that was discussed by the planning commission. And what they decided on was a sixty-five percent impervious surface ratio for the single-family dwelling portion and an eighty percent impervious surface ratio for the townhome portion. So the plan as provided has different widths of the, different lot widths. And the applicant was proposing different impervious surface ratios depending on that lot width. So, basically the, the more narrow the lot, higher ISR you got. And the planning commission thought that would be a bit confusing, so they decided to just go with a, a single ISR for the single family and a single ISR for the multifamily. And I think that addressed all of them. Oh, and the, um, shared buffer, I believe, was discussed with the previous application.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Board?
Looking for a motion?
Uh, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay, so at this time, I need to open it up to the public. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone? Okay, going once, going twice? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this project? Going? Just step forward, say your name. You're more than welcome to speak.
Thank you. Um, so I have a better understanding. First off, I would like to thank all of you for your dedicated service to our county and, um, thanking you for be, doing, doing due diligence in trying to balance the nature that we have. I would also like to thank Mr. Wooten, if he's here behind me, before, for enlightening me to a little bit more from what my understanding when I bought in nineteen seventy-three. Um, that being said, I'm not sure if this is the corridor that we're talking about that abuts Pine Ridge. But, even that, I don't see anything mentioned within regard to even Black Diamond, that there is some kind of sound buffer from their sprawling, um, nature that's there. And I didn't hear a mention of that even, though I went, had gone to a meeting out of here that, uh, talked about a vinyl fence. And that's why I brought up the issue of the potential of a buffer wall that was made out of cement. And, yes, I will come back, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Thank you. I'm gonna close the public portion at this time. Okay, Board, what is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, based on competent and substantial evidence, I make a motion that we approve application P U D dash two-two dash zero nine.
The fifteen conditions?
Second.
Yes, with how many? Fifteen? I'm tired now. How many conditions?
Sixteen. There might be one on the next page.
Oh, yes, sixteen, excuse me.
With sixteen conditions.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Nope. It says it on here. Tell us we did do that. Okay, so, Board, any further discussion?
I'll make a comment.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Bays?
I like the project. I wasn't against your other project. I just like interior access management, so it wasn't anything against the previous project. That's just my feeling and, um, but I appreciate everything you're doing. I like the quality of project that you're proposing and, um, I wish you the best of luck and thank you for bringing it forward. And I'm sorry I only got hung up on one thing, but you got what you wanted in the end, so congratulations.
And what I'd like to say is, um, there's just a fence right now, uh, between Black Diamond and this area anyway. And, um, I'm sure the same, the same real estate person that helped to develop Black Diamond is also on this project, so I believe that there will be, um, a very nice marriage and both communities, um, are very, you know, wildlife-friendly. So, um, there is a, there will, there will be a natural buffer anyway between Black Diamond and this. But, um, I'm sure that the residents of Black Diamond will make sure that our side is done properly and, and sure that Mr. Cappuccelli will make sure their side is done properly. So, I wouldn't worry about that. So, that being said, any other discussion?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Um, Board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Congratulations, it passed five zero. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to adjourn this long day. Thank you.